Good evening. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular live monthly meeting on Wednesday, October 26th, '22. The quorum for this meeting is four. I will now call on the following elected commissioners: James Vigliotti.
Here.
Dion Francis, he will be here. He sent us an email saying he's on his way. Myself, Harold Watson, here. Deborah Lamberty.
Here.
Len Patricelli.
Here.
So we have four people present, one person on their way. But I think we are going to continue. Also in attendance, we have Jay Habansky, our planning and zoning administrator. We have Gail DeCilio, our recording secretary. We have Patricia Sullivan, our legal counsel. The public may speak only at the invitation of the chair during both administrative and public hearings. With that said, I call to order this monthly session of Stratford Zoning Commission at seven o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Now I'd like to go to the public hearing portion. The main thing I want to say first is that the petitions tonight that were advertised, they were advertised in the Connecticut Post on 10/13 and on 10/20. We have a lot to do tonight, so please, I will try to go to be quiet if you will try to be quiet as much as you can. Let's start with Lenny. Lenny, will you read text item number one?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, before Lenny does that.
Yes, sir.
I have petitions one, two, and three, all of which are special case approvals which require four votes. I don't want to proceed with just four commissioners, and I would ask that you pass one, two, and three until later on in the meeting, so that we can wait for Commissioner Dion or an alternate.
You're one, two, three, four. Is everybody okay with that?
One, two, and three.
Do we need to vote on that?
You can vote to take that out of the board.
We're...
I'm moving to make that out of the board.
All in favor?
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Four to one, four to zero?
Thank you very much.
We're now going to move on then to the petition of Stratford Super Stop Realty LLC. That's been, I believe that's Ben Proto or one of his compatriots that's doing this tonight.
I will represent...
You are, okay.
I want me...
Special case approval to construct a self-serve gas station and convenience store in a CA zone. Yes, sir.
Since Ben is not here, do we want to ask if Fifty Husatonic Avenue would like to go first?
I think he's doing, he's going to speak for them. I think he's coming up to... Do you want to wait for Attorney Proto?
He was in the apartment, so he'll be here momentarily. I'll set up, and by the time I'm set up, we should be good to go.
Okay.
I'll open...
John, are you ready to go?
What's before you can be voted on this evening, because we need to go to wetlands anyway, so we're going to proceed with our presentation and ask that we take the vote and so the next...
This applicant is prepared. Fifty Husatonic is ready. They're ready to do it. Okay, then, we're going to go to the next one, which is Fifty Husatonic Avenue, petition of SMH Stratford LLC seeking special case approval to construct a 10,800-square-foot boat repair storage building in a WF zone, waterfront zone.
Okay, for the record, my name is John Walt Garcia, licensed professional engineer and surveyor, licensed contractor in Spade, Connecticut, Principal Officer 190 Fairway Road in town Bethany.
This is Basil Boboski.
And I represent a client, and with me is Basil Boboski, who is the manager for State Harbor at the 605 site. What we're here for is they want to propose a new boat storage and maintenance facility adjacent to their existing facility. They have an existing building on Garage Street, and they want to put a 10,000, approximately 10,000 square foot building just to the south of that. It'll be a typical public building, just going to be used for boat storage and maintenance. It does not add any impervious surface because you're switching asphalt for building. We've already been through the Architecture Review Board, we've already been through Zoning Board of Appeals, and we've gotten affirmatives. We've received comments from TMZ, from Dan and from Jay Habansky, and there's nothing of any great shakes. We've received DE comments, and it looks like they may have referenced an older plan because we actually have the building. One of DEP's comments was to move the building behind the limo line, which is a little in the way of action, which we've done already. It's part of the application of the plans you have, and we've already made, got the building on the DE zone. Those were your two big comments.
I thank you, because that was one of the questions I wrote down, and then I looked at your plan that you had submitted.
Yeah, so the comments were written in August.
Yes, I saw that on the plan.
And I thought we'd review the device set when we submitted, and it turned cat springs to, or hand springs, to be able to move the building back behind the limo line and to get it out of the way of action. So we've done everything the DEP asks for. And so that's basically it. We, I think we've covered everything that anybody has asked about.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
I had a couple of questions.
Chairman, just for the commission, I did receive a letter from the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission from their October 12th meeting. I received it about 20 minutes ago here, and I'll just read, since I haven't had a whole lot of time to review this, I'll read their comment section. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with the harbor management plan, with the understanding, based on the information provided by the applicant, that the proposed project will enhance existing water-dependent facilities and services supporting recreational boating in the harbor management area, and have no effect on existing stormwater conditions on the property. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions here.
Sure.
All of your cards from the neighbors have come in correctly?
Yes, we mailed them all out.
Okay. I have a note here from John Casey, our engineer. He wanted to know about the, specifically if facilities will be added that would connect to the town sanitary sewers.
No.
So you're dealing, okay, that's a good answer to that question.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There is another item that came in today as well. It's a memo from the Health Department, and essentially, and I forward this to the applicant. I had time, because it came in this morning, I believe. Mr. Garcia, you received that email from Olivia Coleman.
Yeah, I think nothing of any great shakes in here.
And it is more of a, was more of a heads-up to the applicant that this has been a testing area for raymark waste, and that this needs to be on their radar as they proceed with development. The Health Department has extended the invitation to the applicant to consult with them as the project goes forward, if they need, have any questions.
I'm sure you are more than aware of these problems.
If anything, they're more than aware of the hazardous waste issues that are associated with the site. But just to give you a heads-up, this is going to encapsulate whatever's there anyways, so it actually, in some respects, enhances the protections provided for the site. Because you're now putting this, right now it's just gravel and some concrete. Now they're going to put a building over it with a concrete floor, and that's a classic way of encapsulating hazards materials.
Yes. I have one final note. This is actually out of one of Jay's administrative reports, asking you to consider that we, that you have a placemaking mural on one of the sides of the building, particularly the side that faces, I would say Ferry Boulevard. A mural of some sort.
Yeah, that was a consideration.
Promoting Stratford and our waterfront.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I know that we just did that with another giant warehouse going in. They put $25,000 in their budget. I'm not going to say a number, I'm just going to say that we're looking to do that to increase...
As a side, I have a client who did that, and he found a boat in fact in the neighborhood, gave a picture of the kid, did a beautiful job, 13-year-old.
That's kind of what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's...
That's something we can do.
So I'm not going to insist that go into the order. I'm just going to have, set it here, and hopefully you'll do the right thing.
Absolutely.
Is there anybody else with any questions?
Hi. So you're going to, is the building, all of those stored boats going to be inside the building?
Yes.
Not all of them. A lot more than we're doing now. They can't put all those boats out that are out there inside this one building.
No. So right now, we've got about 200 boats that are stored on land with us in the winter. That's inside and outside. Right now, we can store about 15 boats inside. This will increase us to about 25 boats inside, and keeping that same figure, around 200 boats on land.
So 200 total, and then between that, 25 of that 200 will be indoors now?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Lenny, any questions? We now have... Sorry.
Commissioner Francis is now present.
I have one final question, and it, this goes to some of the DEP stuff when they were talking about the VE compliant standards and all of that, the VE zone compliant, and having breakaway walls or flood vents.
We took it out of the VE zone.
So it's totally out of the VE zone, so you're absolutely out of the flood zone right now, which means you don't even need to have flood vents.
And that's what I said previously. The building's pulled behind the limo line, and we're totally out of the VE zone.
So, good work.
In good shape.
Yes. Anybody else with any questions? Jay, do you want to make any final comments? Thank you guys for working with us. I appreciate it. Our waterfront is one of the most viable things we have around here. We only want to make it better. Anybody in the audience who is in favor of this project who would like to speak? Hearing none? Anybody who opposes this project that would like to speak? Hearing none?
Move to close the public portion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Second.
Second. Debbie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can move on back to Barry. We're now going to go back to our very first item, number one, on tonight's new items. Barry is speaking first tonight about Volta charging. Jim, would you read that, please?
New item, number one, text amendment, petition of Volta Charging LLC seeking to amend sections 16.2, 16.3, 16.4, 16.5, 16.6, 16.7, and 16.8 to allow electric vehicle charging stations with digital advertising displays.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, where I also reside. I'm here this evening on behalf of Volta Charging Company, 150 DeHaro Street, San Francisco, California. With me is Mr. John Stuckey, Vice President of Public Network Development. I also represent Urstadt Betel Properties, which is the owner of the Dock Shopping Center, the location of this proposed, this proposed use. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and a photograph of the sign, which I posted at the premises pursuant to the rules. The first four exhibits of which are photographs of the site in front of...
Barry, may I interrupt you one second?
Sure.
Barry is going to be handling both the first and the second.
That's good.
But I didn't want to confuse them. I wanted to let you present.
No, that's right. Thank you very much.
So make a break between the two.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll read you the second.
Yeah. So, well, my presentation is the same for both. I'm going to make one presentation.
So you should read the second.
So then, Jim, will you read the second item, please?
Right.
Is the microphone on?
Yes.
Item number two, 200 East Main Street and 955 Ferry Boulevard, petition of Volta Charging LLC seeking special case approval to install four electric vehicle charging stations with digital advertising displays in a CA zone.
I'm short. Anyway, the first four exhibits are photographs of the Dock Shopping Center. First three are located in front of the Stop &amp; Shop building. They're showing you the approximate location of where these, the two charging stations at the Stop &amp; Shop are going to go. And the fourth photo is a photo of the parking lot in front of the BJ's Building, where the two charging stations on the BJ's side is going to go. More importantly than the photos are exhibits five and six. Exhibit five and six are portions of the plans that were submitted to Jay, one for 200 East Main Street, which is the Stop &amp; Shop side, and one for 955 Ferry Boulevard, which is the BJ's side. And I've highlighted in yellow the exact locations of where these charging stations are going to go. So you can see, on the Stop &amp; Shop side, the two charging stations are going to be separated by a row or two of parking, whereas on the BJ's side, the two charging stations are going to be located immediately in front of that little strip center that segregates the BJ's Building from the edge fitness. So, as I indicated, or it was indicated by Jim, this is a petition for a zone text amendment together with an application for special case approval and site plan approval in order to install four electric vehicle charging stations at the Dock, two near BJ's and two near the Stop &amp; Shop. Essentially, the proposed zone text amendment modifies the definition of a commercial sign set forth in Section 16.2 of your zoning regulations. By including within the definition of a commercial sign, the language, quote, "Electronic vehicle charging slash display kiosks are permitted, subject to the provisions of Section 16, which is your sign regulation, and Section 20.2 of the zoning regulations, which is your special case regulation." Furthermore, the amended regulation defines an electric vehicle charging station with certain site locations and height limitations, which are set forth in the definition of the zone text amendment. It also limits the content refresh rate, and most importantly, most importantly, it provides that any such display shall not be visible from any public right-of-way. And I will come back to this in a little bit. But the regulation says, no such sign shall be visible from any public right-of-way, and this is important for a reason I'll get into in a bit. It also provides that the location details of any such EV charging display kiosks must be approved by the zoning commission as a special case application, and the other application that we're here on tonight is the special case application that we're asking you to approve for the Dock. Now, I want to give you a little background as to how the vehicle charging industry works, because I was not aware of it prior to getting involved in this matter. And this is how it works in the Northeast United States. There are essentially three types of electric vehicle charging operations. The first is those dedicated to Tesla motor vehicles, Teslas. Only Teslas can use them. Other plugs don't work. That's it. Second are those funded by the Volkswagen Diesel Gate settlement proceeds. Some of you may remember that five or six years ago Volkswagen got in trouble because it was touting its diesel engines, which didn't perform as they were supposed to. Billion, billions of dollars were, they were fined billions of dollars. That money went into an electric vehicle charging fund, which pays for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations around the United States. The main company which uses those funds is a company called Electrify America. And in her comments, or in Jay's comments, I forget, no, in Susmita's comments, she mentions the electric charging stations over at the Marshall's Shopping Center. Those are Electrify America charging stations. And my man will get into the details of that in a minute when he speaks. And then the third type of operation are EV charging stations, such as are being proposed by my client. Now, each of these different types of facilities operate from different locations on a site, with a different payment schedule for each use, and different upfront capital expenditures necessary for each use. For example, Tesla charging stations pay no rent to the landlord, but don't charge their customers any fees for hooking up. So it's free on both sides of the deal. The Electrify America stations pay some rent to the landlord and charge, but does charge their customers a rate for charging their vehicle. And the charge depends upon whether it's a fast charge or a slow charge or whatever, all right? And then our program pays more substantial rent to the owner of the shopping center, collects advertising revenue from the charging station, and uses that revenue to offset the expense associated with charging the customer to use the charging stations. So that's the extent of my knowledge about the electric vehicle charging station industry. You now know as much as I do. However, I brought with me today Mr. John Stuckey, Vice President of Public Network Development at Volta. He's going to explain to you how the industry operates, the variables associated with each individual operator, the benefits associated with each individual type, and he will also discuss industry standards as to the appropriate number of charging stations to be allocated to each commercial site. Is two enough? Is 10 too many? There are industry standards, which he'll get into, which it's important for you to know. John?
Good evening, everyone. John Stuckey, representing Volta. I am currently employed there, and as Barry mentioned, I'm the Vice President of Public Network Development, and also occasionally data commercialization, so I can speak deeply on how you think about deploying a network, whether it's a Volta network or any charging company nationwide, because we do quite a bit of research into that. So first and foremost, right off the bat, we're technically a California-based company, but we're very much bicoastal now. I grew up in the tri-state area, and I created the relationship with Urstadt Betel, so it's a tremendous honor to be here, and great to be working with that group. And there's a few things that I want you to know about our company, and why we do what we do, and the value that we're trying to bring to not only Urstadt Betel, but really the community at large. So, quick background on this, because it's a fun story, and I'll try to go quickly, because I know we have quite a bit on the agenda. Our company was founded a little over 12 years ago, and it was in Hawaii of all places. And the most brilliant thing that our founder did is he took a really, he took a really wide-aperture look at EV charging. Before, it was really a thing. Tesla was just starting to produce the Roadster. And he said, "Okay, if I want to build infrastructure to support electric vehicles, and I just charge people for electricity, the margins are low and the payback period's long. And most importantly, you have to perfectly match EV adoption with that infrastructure build-out. You can't really solve this chicken and the egg problem, and it's going to be really, really tough to run that business long-term." And I say that because his brilliant thought was, "Okay, if I do this right, I'm creating value for a variety of parties." So what he did is he solicited a local bank in Hawaii, and asked them to sponsor a charging station at a grocery store. And it was a no-name brand, just plastered on the wall, gave away the electricity for free, and the model was born. I believe they're still advertising with us 12 years later and supporting that network. And what's important about that is that you need to understand the mission of Volta and what we're trying to solve when we're investing our own money into this infrastructure. We're trying to build the right infrastructure to meet and lead EV adoption. So people who are not, who do not have the luxury of living in single-family homes and having their own home charger, can rely on a public network. And that's what's so interesting about this particular case at the Dock. So when you think about how much activity goes on there, and how many people it draws, and from a wide variety of communities, this infrastructure is sort of perfect, because we can run a reasonable business, and we're paying a massive premium to install in a great location to attract EV, or to attract EV adoption, and also signal that this infrastructure is there. But it also serves the community and people who would not otherwise have access to charging at their home. So in my mind, just being here and coming to present to you, this is sort of high stakes, because this particular site, above all others, sort of meets every criteria, which I think makes Volta's model brilliant. Now, some things to know about what's going on in the EV space and just how to think about this. As Mr. Knott said, there is money on the table, and there has been, from funds, from the popularly known Diesel Gate settlement, to support this infrastructure. But what's really difficult about citing EV charging infrastructure and operating this business in the Northeast is the expense of our electricity. And it's really important that you think about supporting businesses that have alternative revenue models to drive the cost of electricity down to the end user. And that's because, basically, when you're sourcing electricity for a commercial entity, you're paying for two things. You're paying for the size of the pipe, and you're paying for the flow of electrons or the flow of water through it. The tricky thing about EV charging, and especially critical EV charging, which is really fast, is the size of the pipe is massive. So the first time it's turned on every month, you owe the utility quite a bit of money. The typical example I use with these hearings is we're putting in two Tesla-like charging stations, and if two cars plug in, and they only plug in once, and that's the only thing that happens the entire month, you owe the utility company $6,000. And lord knows, you haven't charged those people $6,000 for using the station once. So it's a really rough business if you don't think sort of holistically about monetizing it. So it's really key when you're thinking about our model and what you're trying to do. It's all about not only building this critical infrastructure, but it's about creating an ecosystem where we're not charging more than the cost of gas and the equivalent of electrons. Because, for instance, if you go to a dense urban environment like New York City and you rely on a public charging network, you're anywhere from, basically, the cost of gas, or maybe $2.53 a gallon gas, all the way up to $6 a gallon of gas, depending upon what charging infrastructure you're using. That's not fair. That's why we created this ecosystem, and we're leveraging the Proctors and Gambles of the world, the Unilevers, you know, anybody who's coming out with an EV is a big buyer of the ad space, to collectively pay for this infrastructure, not pass it on to the taxpayer through any sort of government funding. Not to say that we won't ever go after government funding, but in our first 10 years, we really haven't. So with that, I'm going to stop talking, because I'm sure you have a lot of questions about how the business model works, and especially the guardrails. I'm happy to say this works tremendously well, or this works tremendously well in the community, because we've deployed it across the tri-state and the Northeast. So please.
Don't go anywhere, John. I have a question. In addition to the $6,000 per month upfront electricity charge, what is the cost of the installation of the infrastructure for these...
So the way we optimize our network is to be near the front of stores where the most foot traffic is happening, so we are attractive to the ad sponsors, and also to create the best driver experience. For instance, you look at Electrify America and Tesla, they're buried at the back of the parking lot. It's not the greatest user experience, especially late at night. And because of that, we're paying a massive premium. So each one of these stations, off the cuff, it's probably $30,000 to $40,000 per stall to install. So we need to come up with a business model that overcomes those high-capex figures.
All right, thank you. I have, I want to complete my presentation, and if there's any questions, we can move. All right. I want to discuss the administrative comments received from Susmita. She prepared comments dated October 7, 2022, because the zone text amendment was referred to the Planning Commission per state statute. The Planning Condition conducted a hearing on the proposed text amendment on October 18, 2022. An attached to Susmita's administrative comments is a letter to you from the Planning Commission, in which it made an unfavorable recommendation with respect to this proposed zone text amendment. However, I believe that that unfavorable recommendation was based upon a misunderstanding of this proposed, of the proposed details and constraints that are included, were included by me in this proposed amendment. Specifically, Susmita suggested that you should pay careful attention to understanding how this proposal may impact the overall aesthetics of the commercial corridors in town. The concern articulated by Susmita and others at the Planning Commission meeting was that, because this zone text amendment applies to all commercial properties townwide... was that because this Zone Text Amendment applies to all commercial properties town-wide, it is conceivable that a person driving down one of the main thoroughfares in town would be subject to a barrage of internally illuminated charging stations and that such a circumstance would detract from the aesthetic quality and beauty of the town. This is a correct interpretation of the proposed regulation. As I indicated previously, the most important provision in my proposal and in the text amendment is that, quote, "Any such display shall not be visible from any town right of way," end quote. Therefore, a person driving up and down Barnum Avenue Cut Off in front of Burlington or up and down Main Street in Stratford Centre or up and down Main Street in Paradise Green will not be confronted with these Volta charging stations. The reason is that any such charging station along any of those streets that I just mentioned and many others would be visible from the public right of way. You put charging statements, charging stations in the Burlington parking lot, it's going to be visible from the public right of way. So Burlington wouldn't qualify, okay? Paradise Green wouldn't qualify, the Centre wouldn't qualify, all right? Any such proposal would be illegal and because it's not permitted by the regulation in the first place. So therefore, this concern raised by Sismita, it was not a concern that you have to worry about. Realistically, the only place where one of these charging stations would be permitted would be in a large shopping center or office center with a large parking lot segregated far enough from the street so as not to be visible from the street. Home Depot across the street would probably qualify. The Marshall's site on Barnum Avenue would probably qualify. The Big Y site on Holy Lane would probably qualify. The Office Park Building at 99 Holy Lane would probably qualify. However, I can't think of any other locations in town that where the parking lot is big enough and far enough away from the street so that the charging stations would not be visible from the street. There may be some, there may be other parking lots that fall into the potentially approvable category, but I can't think of any. Sismita's second suggestion was that the Architectural Review Board should review this proposal. She concedes, however, that it remains unclear if the Architectural Review Board could bring any desired changes to this proposal because these EV charging stations by Volta are pre-manufactured products. They are not buildings. They're not constructed like commercial buildings based upon plans and specifications. They are manufactured in a factory and the end product is what gets installed. So a referral to the Architectural Review Board is completely inappropriate. I discussed the necessity for such a referral with Jay in the beginning of, when I began working on this thing. And at that time, he agreed that such a referral was not necessary. Therefore, I submit to you that a referral to the Architectural Review Board is not mandated by the local requirements. Finally, the communication from the Planning Commission in support of its unfavorable recommendation references that this proposal is inconsistent with the community character goals and objectives of the Plan of Conservation and Development. That's the reason why they used to recommend an unfavorable result. This may have been true, this conclusion would have been true if any such charging stations could be visible from a public right of way. That could impact on aesthetics and be a violation of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Sismita did include in her administrative comments when discussing compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development that our proposal is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development because it helps to decrease the town's reliance on fossil fuel, which is one of the considerations in the Plan of Conservation and Development. So the letter from the Planning Commission recommending an unfavorable result is inconsistent with itself and it's inconsistent with the comments that Sismita made at the Planning Commission public hearing. They use as justification reasons that have been addressed by this application by virtue of the fact that no charging stations are going to be visible. Such installations would decrease the town's reliance on fossil fuels, both of which are goals that are consistent with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. Now, finally, I want to discuss the approval criteria for the Commission to consider as section is set, as set forth in Section 20 of the zoning regulations. The first is the size and intensity of the use in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. This special case application calls for the installation of a total of four EV charging stations within a shopping center that has approximately 1,700 cars parking. There is no way anybody can consider such an application to be too intense given the size of the proposal in relation to the size of the parking lot. Conformance with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, I just discussed that with you, that is not a problem. Will the approval affect safety in the street or increase traffic congestion? There is already a potential of 1,700 cars coming onto the site. The addition of four cars coming on to use the EV charging stations is going to have an insignificant consequence, if any, to increasing traffic congestion or safety in the streets. I mean, it's just so de minimis as to be a not issue. The emission of noise, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration. There, this is electric. There will be no noise. It will be smokeless, odorless, gasless, dust-free, and it will manifest no vibrations. The effect of tax valuation on neighboring properties. Because these charging stations will not be visible from the public right of way, they will have no adverse impact on tax valuation of neighboring properties. On the other hand, because of the income generated to the property owner from such use and the desirability of having such charging stations on a shopping center site within Stratford, it is probable that the value of the shopping center itself will rise giving to the EV charging stations located on this property. The other thing here is there are no residences anywhere near this, these locations. I mean, you could hit a drive-in five iron and not hit the closest, I couldn't anyway, and not hit the closest residential neighborhood. Finally, the creation of any fire police hazards. Neither Jay nor Sismita received any comments from the Police Department or the Fire Department. Therefore, we can assume that no fire or police hazards are anticipated. For all these reasons, the approval of this Zone Text Amendment will be in the best interest of the town. It will provide a third type of charging station available to the residents and one for which they will not be charged or will be, or will be charged substantially lower than the Electrify America stations. The location of the four proposed charging stations is very convenient to the customer due to its proximity to the stores on the BJ side and the Stop &amp; Shop side. The installation of four charging stations will never have a significant adverse impact on the quality of life in Stratford. And as I just mentioned, no residential properties are located anywhere near this proposed location. And for all those reasons, I would ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions?
All right, my first question. Now, for these, these displays, are they, are they going to have advertisement, paid advertisement? Or is this basically disidentifying that this is the EV charger station by Volta?
It's a combination of the two and possibly community messaging, depending upon how much desire there is from the local businesses that also exist in that shopping center. So it's, it's interesting because specifically when you look at Stop &amp; Shop and BJ's, the majority of the advertising is going to come from companies that are already selling that good within the store, which kind of falls within onsite advertising. We shouldn't even, and we wouldn't necessarily even be in front of these, you know, zoning boards. So this particular instance, it's a very, this just fits.
You know, there was one other comment I wanted to make. If you look at the regulation, it provides that the lighting can be adjusted, that the applicant has the right, has the ability to adjust the density of the lighting. We also have the ability to set hours for the use of these facilities, certainly during the daytime and probably during the evening hours. But I mean, what would be appropriate as far as the hours of operation are concerned?
Because this is actually critical infrastructure that can serve people that do not have access to their own, their own home charging, I would encourage you to allow it to be 24/7, but ultimately it's up to you and it's up to Erstad Biddle as the site host. We'll be holding to your opinion on that matter.
So would this be something that Stratford would be making the decisions on or would this be coming from your host?
Ultimately, we need your, we need your permission first and we can make that work with the relationship with Erstad Biddle. So typically, when there's, when there's a worry about the infrastructure being on outside of operating hours, we've come to the agreement in numerous jurisdictions that the operating hours tend to be an hour before the center opens and then an hour after it closes.
Let me just give you a little background because when Planning made the decision that they made, I was on Planning when that decision was made originally. We dealt with the issue of digital information boards for probably about two and a half years trying to find out if we could establish those as part of our emergency warning system in Stratford. In addition, could we create a board for a current calendar and also for, for businesses? But after working on that for several years, our lawyers made it very clear that we were opening up all of these rights of public speech issues that we would then be in a situation where if you're going to give this to one person, you have to be able to give it to the next person or they're going to be launching laws.
I'd like to address that, Mr. Chairman. Pat Sullivan wrote the opinion about which you are speaking. And a copy of that opinion was attached to Sismita's administrative comments that she gave this time around to the Planning Commission. I don't think you got a copy of it, but the Planning Commission got a copy. You must already know about it. You do know about it. Pat wrote it. What we're talking, what she was talking about there and what the Planning Commission was dealing with at that time were digital signs on public property. And the issue became an issue of First Amendment rights to prohibit somebody from using a public, a sign on a public space. What can be said on the public, on the public sign? How do you, how do you regulate who gets the right to use the public sign and who doesn't? And I could understand why the Planning Commission did not want to open up that Pandora's box because it is a complicated and litigation-drenched area, which Pat articulated very well in her memo. That has nothing to do with this whatsoever. This is private property. We control the message. By the way, we didn't say this in our presentation, but there is an agreement between Erstad Biddle and Volta which regulates this type of content that can't go on these signs. Adult use, what else?
No guns, no violence, no tobacco, no adults, no, and specifically, no messages that can be construed as moral, political, or anything that is non-business related.
Right, thank you. So I understand your comment regarding having dealt with the previous C-Bolt. You were dealing with a First Amendment issue for signs on public property and this is not that.
Another question that really, if Volta is a good citizen, what about the next person that comes along who might not be a good citizen? And once we change our zoning to allow this, if you look at our regulations, we are very, very controlling of electronic signage. Our businesses, for the most part, we're still enforcing or encouraging traditional New England woodcut signs. We limit very much the square feet that businesses can have and all of those kinds of things. Our political signs, we have wars over every year. But, so I think that what Planning was partly reacting to was us losing the sense that we can control that visual scape ourselves.
Well, you're right about that. And the sign regulation is a very interesting document. It's been amended many times over the years. I've been involved in some of the amendments. The, commercial signs are prohibited. No new commercial signs are allowed in Stratford, period, okay? Identification signs are allowed. The size and height and width and all that other stuff of signs is regulated by your regulation. But your regulation doesn't, doesn't regulate content. It doesn't say what can go on the sign and what can't go on the sign.
Yes, it does. If you read it carefully, yes, it does.
I'm not aware that it does. I mean, you can identify the business that the sign relates to, but if it's anything other than an identification of the business that's located on the property, it's a commercial sign and a commercial sign is not allowed, period. Except for this proposed commercial sign.
So once we say yes to ragu tomato sauce appearing on the sign at Stop &amp; Shop, then what are we going to do when the local hair salon wants to have a sign for their beauty products? How do we respond to them?
Well, why shouldn't the local hair salon have a sign regarding their beauty?
Because Stratford doesn't want the visual pollution.
You're not going to be able to see the sign from the street, Harold.
The right-of-way that cuts through the property at Stop &amp; Shop?
I'm sorry?
The right-of-way that cuts through the property at Stop &amp; Shop? You won't be able to see it from there?
That's not a public right-of-way.
That's not a public road?
That's a private driveway.
Okay.
That services the...
And you won't be able to see any of that from East Main Street?
No, no.
Even the one on the opposite end?
No, no.
What?
I mean, there's...
So why then do we need to have a change in our zoning if what we're doing is something that's only going to take place in these two locations?
I'm not saying it's only going to take place in these two locations. I'm saying it's only going to take place on a shopping center where the signs cannot be visible from the street. That's what this regulation says. I named three or four other sites in town where I could conceivably think that it would go. But it isn't going to go on Main Street up and down in the green or the center. It's not going to go on Burlington. It's not going to go up and down Barnum Avenue because any such sign located on those rights of way would, would be visible from the right-of-way. So this is a two-part test here. The first is the Zone Text Amendment. In order to get to the second part, which is the special case, I'll talk about in a minute, we need to have the Zone Text Amendment that says these types of signs are allowed. Once they are allowed under the circumstances described in the Zone Text Amendment, height, width, not visible, et cetera, then that gets you to the second part, which is the special case application. And on the special case application, Joe Gobby Gotts comes in with a proposed sign on another piece of property. You analyze that site plan. You analyze what's being proposed and you say, eh, this either looks good or it doesn't. You've got eight or nine criteria within Section 20.2 under which you have discretion to approve or deny an application. Believe me, if you want to deny an application for a special case, you can do it. Planning Commission can't deny an application for subdivision if it complies, but you can. You've got discretion. So if you don't like what you see on the special case application with respect to the site plan, you deny the application. It's as simple as that. That's how you control it. You control it with the special case procedure that follows any such application.
Anybody else? Debbie?
Just to be clear, this is going to be seven feet tall?
Yes.
Now, that's much taller than any vehicle that would be parked there, true?
I don't know about that.
Well, unless it's, it's a very large van.
Yeah.
Or a truck.
I'll have John address it.
Wait, 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 I'm not done.
Go ahead.
Because what you're advertising is not to the person that's plugging in to charge their vehicle. You're advertising to everybody that walks past.
Exactly.
These charging stations.
That's right.
So that could be hundreds of people in an hour.
Hopefully, it would be. I mean, that's the goal, that's the goal.
But, but nobody's going to stand there and watch. I don't, I mean, maybe they will, but I don't think so. So I don't understand the purpose of the digital.
The sign changes every eight seconds. If you look at the regulation, the sign can change not more than once every eight seconds. So the message is going to say, "Barry, not lawyer." And then eight seconds from now, it's going to say, "Lenny Petroselli, good guy." They may say that. I don't know if they would necessarily say that. So people aren't going to be standing around watching the sign. Whatever is... Whatever's showing at the time, it's like these ones on the highway. I love those signs.
What, what signs?
You know, the digital signs on the highway? They're much nicer looking than the, than the old ones, I think. That's a, that's a subjective taste.
I guess you could see them when you're stuck in traffic, but other than that, you're not going to pay attention.
And then they change.
Anybody else? Lenny? Jim?
Yeah, I just have a question about the auto dimming feature.
Yes?
Well, I, it says that it shall be equipped with an auto dimming feature, so how, how does that work? The sign is, how does?
So both the LED and the lights associated, and the lights associated on the edges to show whether or not it's in, in use, auto dim at night. I can get you the actual nit reading. I believe it dims down to 1,500. And this is why ultimately you have discretion on when these stations can be in use, because if you view that as light pollution and you want them off at 10:00 P.M., perfectly fine. It's within your power. Frankly, as somebody who lives in the Northeast and within a proximity of New York City, I don't know if I've ever seen true starry nights, so... But ultimately, it should be your decision as the community leaders.
So, so really, though, it's like a, you would set it?
Yeah, it's on, it's, it's on a timer based on, based on the existing, based on the time of year. So when it gets dark out, it dims.
Yeah, so, right. So in other words, what I'm trying to, so, so it's not like it, it somehow reads the environment and dims itself? It's something you would have to set into it to do?
Currently, it's, it's, currently, it's done that way. In the future, and that's sort of the brilliance of this model and how we see this infrastructure, that can be done. Yes.
Have you ever considered having like a Bluetooth connection so that anybody coming in to use it will automatically get it on their own flat panel in their, in their car? Where, I know that, I, I, my assumption is, is that your business model, you can't make money without this advertising.
No. And nobody can really make money in EV charging without this advertising. And that's something that really scares me. Like, it really scares me.
I'm, I'm, I'm-
I spent six years at Tesla, and Tesla can afford to build this infrastructure.
I'm putting in my order for a car right now.
Yeah.
So I understand.
Yes. If you don't, so, look. What's interesting, having gone through the build-out of this network, is the answer is not to make these a distraction. The brilliance of this and what we've spent over a decade proving to advertisers is that the halo effect and the association that you're getting, the Procter &amp; Gamble's of the world, to effectively sponsor free EV miles, it is a worthy ad, it is a worthy advertising medium for them. However, I would be absolutely crazy if I came into this environment and said, "I want to show pictures. I want to show sound. I want it to dance, light up, and interact with individual people every time somebody looks at it." That's not the answer. That's distracting. It's a simple messaging brilliantly placed on the path to purchase, and it allows us, it's a gateway drug.
Like a bus stop.
Yeah.
Electronic bus stop.
It allows us to fund the build-out of this infrastructure. This is a quarter million dollars we're putting in, and we're giving away the power for free. This also funds the absurd cost it takes to build the mission-critical DC fast infrastructure, which I would also like to bring to that center if this, if this is approved.
May I make a suggestion as an old marketing person?
Sure.
You need to do a video so we could see it.
That's fair.
It's interesting that you should say that, because I have had requests from this gentleman and from other clients who have appeared before this commission that we should be using electronic, uh... Barry, I agree with you.
Absolutely.
It would make, it would make these presentations a lot easier.
I agree.
A lot easier for you to understand.
I was a technologist in my career. I understand what you're saying.
But we're on board with that, if you want.
Anybody?
Um, so just going back to the advertisement. So you, I mean, if it wasn't something that you covered, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be opposed to stipulations on what should be advertised there? I mean, I, I don't know the total-
Yeah, within reason, absolutely. And I'm pretty sure we can negotiate to share the exact language of our agreement with Erstap Biddle. Yeah. So I'm happy to show you those, but verbatim, no guns, no violence, no tobacco, nothing adult, which frankly, and I'm going up to my mother's house to help her move in a little bit, the, whatever the adult sign is on 95, I know is an eyesore for everyone, and no adult, we'll put it that way. And what I think was especially astute by Erstap Biddle was putting in, no, there will be no advertising or messaging related to a non-business activity and could be construed as moral, political, or anything ambiguous. This has to be as about as vanilla as possible to be in the public environment, and that's how it is.
Okay, thanks.
There's about 3,000 nationwide, and we have over 100 in New Jersey. And Connecticut is more than New York right now. And if we could snap our fingers, we'd probably put in another five or 10,000 overnight, because that's what the world is going to need.
Are there examples of where people limited the video screen, the digital screen, to the time that they're there?
No. There's no-
So it costs run from 1:00 to 2:00?
It makes, there's, and you know from the business, there's absolutely no money in speaking to that individual purpose, person. Like, I get it, gas TV has made some people money, but this is not this, and it's trying to serve a higher purpose. We're not just trying to monetize an existing asset.
I'm just asking.
Totally.
Jim? Deborah? We're done? Uh, is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Please come and give your name and your address.
Anybody wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Say it again. Anybody wish to speak in favor? No? Is there anybody here who wish, wishes to speak in opposition? Please come and give your name and address.
Good evening. Greg Riley, 152 Oakland Place. Interesting argument going on here, because there's a lot of concern that these signs are not seen by too many people. Are they offensive to some people? They're not. They can't be seen from the public right-of-way, but they must be seen by enough people to pay for the advertising. So they're seen by a fair number of people. Let me get, let me read some notes here. "Please deny the application to change our zoning regulations, which would allow for electronic commercial advertising in all commercial properties in Stratford. Electronic signs are now prohibited by your zoning regulations, for good reason. Do not abandon the will of the people and the judgment of previous zoning boards by starting to allow electronic signs, which in my view, would create eyesores. In an ostensible attempt to reduce one kind of pollution, carbon emissions, this application seeks to replace that with visual pollution for private financial gain. I'm in favor of preserving and improving the aesthetic appeal of Stratford. In fact, I submit the town needs improvement in this area, not further deterioration. Various town bodies are concerned with this, too. The P.O.C.D., the Plan for Conservation and Development, calls for preserving and enhancing Stratford's neighborhood and commercial centers as elements of a cohesive whole. That is to say, commercial properties are part of the community. They are not outliers. So signs within the commercial property are part of the community. I have attended a few planning meetings for the town's new P.O.C.D., where public input is now being solicited. In those sessions, I've heard others speak about their concern for preserving and improving aesthetic appeal of our town. I see this application and the proposed electronic advertising signs, seven and a half feet high, 21 and a half square feet, as opposed to the current and future P.O.C.D.s. I hope you see this as well. The town code established an advisory board for the purpose of providing guidance, preserving and improving the appearance and beauty of the community. I see this application as being in opposition to the town's concerns for improving appearance and beauty. If anyone sees 21-square-foot electronic signs with ads changing every eight seconds as improving the beauty of the community, I bet it is only the applicant who may be blinded by the color of money from the ad revenue they will collect. Do not compromise on the size of signage, if that comes up. Apparently, it won't. I guess they only manufacture one size. I find that hard to believe. However, over the years, I've seen zoning applicants, you know, come and shoot for the moon and be more than happy to settle for a reduced size of whatever it is they're asking for. Not visible to the public right-of-way? Well, again, it must be visible to plenty of people, or it would not be a viable business. Alternatives. Look at the small EV stations with no electronic advertising elsewhere in town. That has been touched on. Have the users of the EV stations cover the cost of the energy utility. Why should the town and its people have to pay with aesthetic deterioration so that a private company can sell advertising through an energy utility? Please do not allow this proposed increase in visual pollution. Please, consider the historic and natural aesthetic appeal of Stratford. Work to preserve and improve the appeal. Deny this application, because it is in opposition to that public mission expressed by the town people and its bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Seeing none?
Close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman?
I withdraw my motion.
I'd like a rebuttal, if I may. Uh, I, in listening to that gentleman, I think there was confusion and possibly generated by me and my comments before. I did not mean to say that these signs are not going to be seen by people. The idea is that they will be seen by people. That's what generates the income. What the concern was about these signs being visible from the public right-of-way is let's say you got people driving up and down Main Street. You got people driving up and down Barnum Avenue, cut off past Burlington, and these signs are, and these stations are all over the place lit up. Those signs, visible from the street, would be a distraction to people driving in the public right-of-way. It, it's not about not being visible to people. It's about becoming a distraction, and these signs are not going to become a distraction. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second?
Second.
By Jim? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are now going on to our next, I think Barry again. This is, uh... Deborah, can you read number, number, number three?
2590 Main Street. Petition of James and Diane Colgan, seeking special case approval to construct a mixed-use TOD development consisting of 38 residential units and ground four-floor retail space per Section 7.10 in a LB TOD overlay TOD one zone.
This is you, or this is me? Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with Offices at 1656 Main Street, where I also reside. I'm here this evening on behalf of James and Diane Colgan of Prospect Street, Stamford, who are the owners of this property and who are submitting an application for special case and site plan approval to construct a transit-oriented development apartment complex containing 38 units, made up of 35 one-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms, with some first-floor retail space, which project would be known as Temple Court Townhouses. There are 39 parking spaces required. We are proposing 43. Now, the Colgan family has been around Stratford for over 20 years. They purchased the Station House Square Shopping Center across the street in 2001. They made improvements to that shopping center. They were honored by the town with a beautification award. They have maintained the property very well. They have worked with countless Stratford small businesses who have been part of the Station House Square community. They have donated space to local arts organizations and taken responsibilities of owning this property and the center of town seriously. They are not people who buy property and flip it. These people buy and they hold as real estate investors. They are going to develop this property themselves. They aren't selling it. They're going to keep it as a long-term, uh, project. Uh, this, and their son, Rob Coleman, is here with me tonight in the second row, blue blazer. This time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing a folder of exhibit which I have just handed to each of you, which contain photographs of this building. And it's known pretty much by most of us as the Masonic, Masonic Temple Building on Main Street, across the street here. It had been purchased by a group of doctors in 1979, I believe. And they had converted the Masonic Temple Building to medical offices at that time. This is, Exhibit 1 is a view of the building from across the street. Exhibit 2, a view of the building from the north side. 3, a view of the building from the back. 4, a view of the parking lot located in the back of the site. And you can see the Camelot Apartment Building, the back of the Camelot Apartment Building in the background there. Exhibit 5 is a photograph of Temple Court heading east towards the Union Cemetery, which abuts it. And you can see the United Methodist Church Nursery School Playground on the left and the maintenance garage for the Union Cemetery on the right. Now, Exhibits 6, 7, 8, and 9 are exhibits, are, are architectural renderings of the proposed tea shop, coffee shop that we are proposing for the first floor of this application. That is, that George Wiles, the architect, will get into with you a little bit more. But I wanted to show you these exhibits to give you an idea of what we're anticipating doing with this so-called commercial area. And the reason why I'm giving you photographs is because this issue came up at the Architectural Review Board. They, they raised the issue as to how we could enhance the area with respect to that commercial. And those photographs reflect that enhancement. So this is, this property is located in Stratford's LB Civic Center Zone. It's on .78 acres. It's located on Main Street across the town hall, across from the town hall, across Temple Court from the Methodist Church. There are no inland wetlands in proximity to this property or in, on this property. There are no, therefore, no inland wetlands. Applications were required. The proposal, proposal was referred to the Architectural Review Board, which conducted hearings on the application on September 8, 2022, and October 13, 2022. Certain questions and issues were raised by the Architectural Review Board at its September 8 meeting, and the matter was continued by the board until the October meeting, so that we could respond to them and address the issues raised by it. We did so respond at the October meeting, and a copy of the ARB's final recommendation is attached to Jay's administrative comments. Those recommendations will be addressed by my architect, George Wiles, in his presentation. Now, one benefit that I can talk about that came out of the Architecture, the Architectural Review Board exercise, non-architectural in nature, more of a site plan issue, had to do with the parking lot under the new building in the back. Originally, we had proposed coming in the back of the building and backing out. Coming in to the parking lot under the building and backing out. And the Architectural Review Board suggested that we look at alternatives to that scenario so that you can come in the back and go out the street, so there wouldn't be any backing out. As a result of that discussion, we were able to come up with that concept. And that design concept is included in our proposed revised plans.
Just to clarify, they're now going to go all the way down to the end of Temple Street or Avenue, or whatever it's called, and turn right into the property and then come out mid-block as their exit?
Exactly. That's, that's exactly right.
Thank you.
At this time, I want to introduce Steve Santacroce, who's our civil engineer from Rose- who's our civil engineer from Rose T-Zo. He'll take you through the site plan, the landscaping plan, the lighting plan. Steve.
As you present this, can you specifically speak to what the ARB was asking you to modify?
Yes.
Well, George is going to address the ARB. The architect's going to address the.
He is, okay, fine. Are you, are you addressing engineering issues?
Civil, yep. Good evening. My name is Steve Santacroce, civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. I work at Rose T-Zo and Company in Fairfield. And as you said, I'm going to go through the site layout and then George will go through the ARB comments and the architectural portion of the proposal. So as you see, we have a, just an aerial view of the general area, just to kind of show where we are. The train station is just to the south, a short walk, and we're in a TOD zone. Here's our site survey. Basically, here's our existing building, existing parking area, which is completely impervious, paved over from the rear of the building through this edge to the eastern property edge here. And there's currently catch basins within this rear parking lot where the water currently flows, sheet flows to. And we are proposing an addition over the existing parking area and we're proposing to maintain as much as possible the existing parking area that is currently there with an addition of improvements such as landscape islands within the parking area. So we're decreasing the impervious area, which is going to help us with proposed stormwater runoff. We're going to be decreasing the runoff from the existing condition. We're also proposing several landscaping improvements in front of the existing building as well as along Temple Court, as well as lighting for the proposed parking lot under the building and within the rear parking area. The proposed building addition is for thirty-eight units. Thirty-five will be one-bedroom and three two-bedroom units. The parking requirement for that is thirty-nine spaces. We are proposing forty-three spaces, so we're providing more than we need to for the parking. Turning to the grading and drainage plan. We're maintaining the existing sheet flow from the rear of the building to the east. We're proposing the addition of infiltrators, which will further reduce the runoff from the site. It'll, we're proposing water quality units and some additional yard drains and catch basins to improve the stormwater runoff. We have our sediment and erosion control plan with silt sacks and catch basins, silt fences around construction area and anti-tracking pad. Here is our detailed sheet of this. The ARB commission had some comments about the landscape plan, which have been incorporated in this plan before you. Some of these recommendations included improvements to the front of the existing building. So we've incorporated those recommendations. We have rhododendron bushes, daylilies in front of the existing building and along Temple Court. We're proposing to improve the look of the front of the building, which George will get more into. But basically, we're having a brick patio with benches and bushes with a flagpole in the middle along Main Street. We're proposing a dumpster enclosure in the rear, just adjacent to the rear parking lot. And I could show you detail of kind of what ARB recommended. They just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be a eyesore.
Are these updated? Were they included in the drawings that we got?
Yeah.
Okay.
So George will take you through to the architectural plans at this time.
Could I ask you one question? There was a, our town engineer had spoken about the fact that he was worried about the volume, water quality, volume of a half-inch of rain. Have you addressed all of those issues that came from the engineering?
Yes, those will be addressed. The water quality volume computation is seen on SP two of the drawings that you have before you.
So you'll be fully in compliance with our MS four going forward? Not just during construction?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
How many parking spaces in total for the whole, you know?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Yep.
And it's thirty-nine apartments?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight? Okay. It's possible that in a one-bedroom apartment, there could be two people and two drivers. Who's going to park?
The TOD zoning regulation requires thirty-nine parking spaces. We have forty-three, so we have four extra parking spaces beyond that which is required. The idea being that these four parking spaces would be available for use by people who might be coming to use the tea room or the coffee, the coffee shop.
But what about the residents?
Well, the residents.
If there's more than thirty-eight residents and everyone drives, where are they going to park?
The purpose of the TOD regulation is to provide housing accommodation for people who take the train. The TOD regulation resulted from a study that was done by the Planning Commission about eight years ago, dealing with the parking problem at the train station. And the result of that study was that, based upon the investigation of the expert that did the study, it was determined that people who live within one-half mile of a train station will walk to and from the train station to get the work. If you live a half a mile plus ten feet, you won't walk. So as a result of that, the TOD regulation was put into effect and a radius around the train station of approximately a half a mile was created, within which area TOD apartment regulations could be approved. This is one of them. And based upon the fact that people are anticipated to be walking to the train station, it's further anticipated that these people are going to be one-car families. That's where the regulation, that was a justification for the regulation that was approved by this commission when it approved the TOD regulation.
Any other questions of our engineer?
All right, I'd like to call George Wiles, our architect.
My name is George Wiles, the architect for the project. Our offices are at two fifty-seven Noggettuck Avenue, Milford, Connecticut. I'm going to walk you through the, the plans and then I'm going to jump away from the exterior elevations into the renderings because I think they're a better representation of the, of the design. The first floor is essentially, we're using the existing building and we're going to renovate that into living units and then we're going to park on the ground floor. One of the, the unique things of this particular building is that it does have architectural significance along Main Street. It does have a context. We all know that the south of, of the property is the railroad station. Then on an apartment complex of about twenty-six thousand square feet, which a multi-story. Then the Masonic Temple, the existing building. The intent of the project is to keep the existing architecture as is from Main Street. We'll be reconstructing the Bose Arts Front Entryway and resurrecting the staircase. In addition to that, when we were in front of the ARB, they asked us to take a look at some additional pedestrian-friendly site elements. And we did do that. The site plan reflects that since we've been at the ARB, which we have a, a small plaza within that circular, between the two stairs, which is a circular plaza, which encourages seating. We introduced some bike racks and some benches, which will encourage pedestrian action along Main Street. North of, of, of our project is the Methodist Church, which is somewheres between twenty-five thousand and thirty thousand square feet. And in, north of that is the frontier identified as probably a switch station and that's around fourteen thousand square feet. Main Street is very wide and this is, site is a perfect transitional zone for multifamily. You couldn't write a, a better project for, for this type of, this type of a, of a repurposing or re, and a new use. In the rear of the property, to the west side, is the, is the cemetery and then to the east is, is Main Street and more commercial property. So that's the context of, of this particular, this particular project. The existing building will remain as is. Inside, we'll completely gut it and create apartments. In the, in the existing, in, to the rear of, of the building, we will construct a, a three-story addition, which will house additional, additional units for a total, as Attorney Knott said, for thirty-eight, thirty-eight living, living units. And the breakup of that, those units are that, as they're shown on the front, the front sheet, which are thirty-five one-bedroom and three, two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, giving us a total of, of thirty-eight. We move to the, the, the second and the third floor are essentially the same. The roof on the existing will remain as is. It's a pitched roof, asphalt with the wings, very classical, flat roofs to augment the pitched roof. On the addition, we will be putting in a solar, a solar array and maybe I'll just take this moment to just talk a little bit about, about sustainability. And I think that our approach at Wiles Architects is a little bit different than, than most when it comes to sustainability. Sustainability to us has three prongs and those three prongs are wellness, the program. Does it really meet the need? Does it satisfy? Is this building designed to house comfortably people in multifamily environment? Does it have an indoor air quality that, that it, that, that the residents can enjoy? And then the energy, the energy, not only the energy consumption, but the birth-to-grave approach to the, to the project. What does it, what is the impact for the energy to manufacture the materials and get it to the site? And then what is the energy to take to operate the building? And then finally, the cost. And the cost is basically two, has two components. The initial cost and then the cost over the life of the building. So in this approach, the owner, Rob, has really supported us in that, that triple approach to sustainability. So when we're analyzing mechanical systems in this, we've selected heat pumps and the condensers will be on the roof. We've also selected a, a, a solar array that will be on the new addition that will also be able to operate and hold down the electrical costs for the, the structure and then sell some energy back into the grid. So that's the floor plans and let me just go to the, the renderings. So as, as I spoke before, the, the front entrance will be enhanced. We'll reconstruct the stair. Right now, it's in a little deteriorated state. It needs some attention and we're going to do exactly, replicate what, what is there and repair it and put it back in condition. We do have a transformer that the landscape architect has provided some screening for. That's an existing transformer location and we're going to keep that where it, where it is. In between the staircases, I said, we're going to augment that with a, with a plaza. We've got the bike racks and then down, down Temple Court. We come down Temple Court and we have the coffee shop. The coffee shop is, the coffee shop is set down two feet, which brings me to the, to the, to the height of the building and a little, talk a little bit about that.
I have a question. On the right from the bottom, is that the retail entrance?
This is the retail entrance, yes. Right here. Keep going here? No, that's not the, the, this is not the retail entrance. That's a entrance to an existing stairwell. The existing stairwells are very complex. What we did is, not to bore everybody to tears, but what we did is we scanned the building to create a point cloud, three-dimensional model. And this stairwell, I don't know what they were thinking when they built it, but it's a half a level up, two steps down, then another landing that's in between the, the floor above. So that's an emergency exit, short, short version of that. So the, the, talk about the, the building height and, and the finished floors. So the, the, the building originally had a very classical design. Now, classical design is you set the building up with a large number of stairs, with a lawn area, and it's, it's above the street level in a monumental setting. Okay, that's all fine and dandy, except that the basement now and the first floor are in no man's land in terms of accessibility and ADA barrier-free design. So that becomes a real challenge. And not only that, when, when you try to introduce an elevator as they did in the existing medical building, it's got too many stops. So they introduced a huge interior ramp, if anybody's been to the doctor there, a huge interior ramp to, to make that transition. We solved that by having an exterior entrance, an exterior entrance at this point that enters at grade, ramps down on, in, within the lobby and then hits the first floor. After that, we're matching all the, the floor levels at that point. So when the, when Jay's comment was on the height of the building, the height of the building is fifty-one feet. Now, there's been some confusion about that because on the elevations, we indicate a floor elevation of sixty and a finished floor elevation of twenty. And I apologize for that, but that's one of the little freaky things about working with technology. When we get the, the three-dimensional topographic, topographic model from the surveyor, we have to set the building in real-world time at the elevation that it is and the computer automatically converts that to feet and inches. So we get the elevation, the grades around the building are elevation twenty. When we plug it in, it comes twenty feet, zero inches, and then we build from there. So it's just one of the things that, that happens, but I understand why everybody was kind of confused. But on, on drawing M three oh one, I believe, we did dimension it and we showed it as fifty-one feet to the top of the.
Okay.
So.
Question on that. May I interrupt you one more time? Is the back building relatively the same height as the front building in terms of the roof lines?
It's the same height as the front building.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. And. Pardon me? Fifty-one. Fifty-one feet. Yeah, from grade. Right from grade. And let's see, so, so the exterior materials, the Architectural Review Board asks us to prepare a material board, which we've been lugging around. And we're going to be using brick that matches. This might not match it perfect, but we're going to get it to match as close as we can. All PVC trim that's maintenance-free. The horizontal siding will be cemented tissue board, fancy name for.
Hardy, Hardy, Hardy board?
Yeah. And then, and then we just blew that up a little bit to show you what the difference in the textures are, to give you a little bit of that. And then the Architectural Review Board asked us to give us, give them renderings of context. And we did. We submitted four renderings to them. And I can tell you that the rendering going south, the rendering going, going south on Main Street towards the center of Stratford, the distance between the church and our addition is approximately two hundred feet. And at thirty-five miles an hour, that's a two-second visual to, to our particular property. Coming north, you can't see it. It's blocked by Camelot Apartments. And coming from the intersection across the street, you can, looking down Temple, that's where the Architectural Review Board had their, their, their biggest. where the architecture review board had their, their, their biggest concern. And that we originally provided the building on round columns. They felt that was inappropriate. We changed those columns to rectangular. We changed the material from concrete to match the existing base of the existing building so that the horizontal line of the base of the building relates in terms of its mass. We've picked up the, the brick, which is the same of the, of the existing building. And then we've selected the horizontal siding so that there is a hierarchy of design. We don't want to fight that, 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 that great architecture that's here that's never going to be created ever again. But, so we chose a neutral horizontal siding, which you can obviously see, this is the most important building. So that's how we addressed, we addressed, we addressed that. And I think now I'd like to go down the, the review comments by the staff and see if I can address it. So the, I, I talked, I already talked a little bit about the, about the, the context and the relationship of the, the devolvement to the surrounding. We're, we're about 30,000 square feet, and south of us is 26,000. North of us is about 30,000. The, the, south of Camelot Apartments is the parking station, which, I don't want to say anything negative, but I think that that, to me, is, is like a missing tooth along the Main Street streetscape. Yeah, you know, and I wish there was something that could be done to there. But leaving that alone, moving up the street, the size of the buildings and the complexity of it match our, ours in terms of its mass scale and, and texture. So I think we are, I think we've solved the, the, the massing relationship very, very well. One thing I do want to point out in that, that Rob was, insisted upon, is that with redesigning multi-housing and what's on the cutting edge of multifamily right now, is that a lot of us are working from home, we're working remote, and we've provided a lobby with a little bit larger space that will be used for business centers and amenities such as that. We talked about the building height. Take a look at drawing M301 and 302. We illustrate that very clearly as 51 feet. We talked about the adjacent buildings. The facade, the fenestration on the addition is exactly 35 percent, 35.1 percent. I was sweating that this afternoon. But it's 35 percent, so that, that does comply. Let's see, examine the landscaping. I have to say, the landscaping is probably, I think, one of the, the biggest improvements of the design that came out of the ARB. I would say, if you want to talk in terms of dollars, we went in with a $10,000 planting scheme. We gave, we now, before you, is probably about a $100,000 scheme. So that's quite an improvement to the, to the project, and I'm sure Rob is right now having a, a little bit of a condition. And we talked about sustainability, and we talked about our three-prong approach, that it's more than just, you know, saying things that we're going to buy wood from a controlled forest, but there are three elements to it. And Rob has embraced that, and we're going to be doing that when we go into design. And another, another thing that I want to point out to the board is that, as of October of this year, just a couple of weeks ago, the State of Connecticut adopted a new building code. Now, that building code made very little life safety changes. You know, they tweaked it here, they tweaked it there. Biggest impact, energy conservation. We're going to jump our energy conservation, our exterior building envelope performances almost 60 percent. Big, big change coming down. This building will comply with that. I would say all the buildings in Connecticut, just by complying with the building code, are going to achieve like a Silver Leeds level. So that's something that's coming down the pike, so you can be happy that your, your state legislators did the right thing. Let's see, the rooftop units, we talked a little bit about those. The, the unit, the, the mechanical system that we're thinking about is a single-zone unit with a very small compressor on the roof. And I think that concludes. If I have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, did you address the TOD, the recommendation about access to the train station, other than walking down Main Street?
Yeah, I, I would like to address that. That, that issue came up at the architectural review board meeting. They suggested that we create a pathway from the back parking lot down to the train station. Problem with that is, there is private property between this property and the train station, one of which is the Camelot Apartments. So for us to do that, we would have to negotiate easement rights across the back of the Camelot property, which we haven't tried to do, we may or may not be able to do. But it would put this, it would put the developability of this project in the hands of a third party over whom we have no control. And I would not like to be put into that situation. Now, if this proposed development was located anywhere else from here, I would say, all right, well, maybe we should give it a shot. However, you've got to remember something. This site is like 450 feet from the train station. Walking on Main Street to the train station is no worse than creating a sidewalk across the back of the property. And it's downhill from here to the train station. So to put in a pathway across the back of the Camelot Apartments to get to the train station makes absolutely no sense. I said that to the people at the ARB, but I guess they didn't buy my argument. But it, it's not something we can do, and it's not something that we agree to do. Complying with Jay's, with John Casey's comments, no problem. All the other things that I've said. Thank you, George. You can sit down. Now, at this time, I want to address Jay's administrative comments. Jay goes through all of the requirements of the TOD Regulation Section 7.10. And he finds that our proposal complies in every respect with 11 of those requirements. The other section of 7.10, which Jay mentions, that we have to address, have already been addressed by George and by Steve in their presentation, their presentation. This includes compliance with the ARB building, the ARB recommendations, the building height issue, the enhancement of the entrance to the coffee shop area, the enhancement of the entrance to the building on Main Street. Now, my exhibit, I think it's my exhibit one. Yeah. My exhibit one was taken this morning. That shows this big bush right in front of the building on Main Street. Huge bush. I've driven by that thing 10,000 times. I never realized that behind that bush was a beautiful alcove in between the two staircases that come down on either side of the entrance. And when you look at George's architectural renderings, you can see how that alcove is being enhanced with bike racks, plantings, flags, landscaping, everything else.
No, speaking of the bottom of the.
Huh?
That's the elevation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this, this one here. You can see that alcove there where that person is standing, to the top of, on the top of the right. I mean, that is really something very, very nice, which I never even knew was there. So congratulations, George, on that one. Anyway, they wanted to see an enhancement to the coffee shop area. They wanted us to put a little canopy over the entrance, dial it up, put a sign. And the last four photographs that I submitted as part of my submittals shows what we're planning on doing with the, the tea shop. The lighting, the window area, the landscaping, the visibility of rooftop equipment, all of those issues raised by Jay have been addressed by either Steve or George. Now, I want to discuss the zoning commission approval criteria that you are to look at in making a decision. First is the size and intensity of the use. Is it compatible with the relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development? This is a 38-unit residential apartment located in pro, close proximity to the train station. It complies in all respects to the TOD Regulation. No variances are being requested, and there's nothing that we're missing as far as compliance is concerned. Number two is conformance with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. As indicated, it's a permitted use, and since it's a permitted use, it complies with the town, the Plan of Conservation and Development. Will it affect safety in the street, increase traffic congestion? A 38-residential apartment complex will generate minimal traffic, the concept being that most residents will take the train in the morning and evening for their commute. The emission of noise, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration should be none from this low-intensity development. The effect on tax valuation, 38 units will have no adverse impact on tax valuation of neighboring properties. The design and architecture of this proposed structure will be an enhancement to the neighborhood, not a detraction from the neighborhood. Creation of fire, police hazards, Jay received no adverse comments from the police department or the fire department, so there should be no issues there. This is a good application with minimal intensity and beautiful architectural design. We are able to maintain the character and architectural beauty of the existing Masonic Temple Building, which is very unique, and it complies in all respects with the zoning regulations. It should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. I think the question's them, right? I now would like to open this up to the floor. Oh, we need to close it first, right? No, no, I'm right. Oh, sorry. Anyone, any of our committee, like, speak? Yes?
Yes, I have, I have a question, actually. Now, I see you have solar panels on the roof. How much, how much power does those solar panels generate? And where would they focus on, like, common areas, health and safety, lighting, emergency
The, the number of watts for the, for the, the panels we've just shown as a place marker, we've shown them on the roof. But the intent is definitely to operate all the common areas, site lighting, the hallways, the stairways. But with this size of an array, we'll be able to then probably sell additional energy back into the grid. So that's something that when we get into the construction documents and the details that we'll be planning out.
And now, do they have battery storage where they could be used for backup, backup lighting in case power goes out?
Unfortunately, the technology's not there yet. We're getting there, but storing batteries onsite just creates a whole nother level of code considerations that are just, at this point, cost prohibitive. But we're heading in that direction. What, what happens is that the energy that we don't use then recycles back into the grid.
All right. Thank you. I have a, actually, another question. Now, are there LIHTC units in this, in this development? LIHTC units? Low-income housing tax credit unit?
Affordable housing.
No, 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 no. All RCO. All right. And, and how many dumpster locations are there? And how, how big are those dumpsters? Are they 20-yarders? Or how, how big are they?
The dumpsters are.
One dumpster.
One dumpster, it's.
15 by five.
A 15-yarder for 40, 40 units?
Come over, Steve.
Yeah, how many?
Identify yourself.
How many yards?
Steve Santa Cruz. So we have a, we have shown a 15-foot-wide by five-foot-deep concrete pad for the dumpster enclosure.
So it's a 15-yarder, like you said? That's, that's a very small dumpster for 40 units. How often are they going to dump? I mean, going to pick it up? Because I'm, I'm assuming you're using a private company, right?
As needed. Yeah, as needed.
As needed? So they would have to call once it gets filled up?
I, I can tell you this, the, the owners of the property are very fastidious. And you can just take a look at, across the street at the, at their shopping center, it's immaculate. And you can be assured that they're going to do the right thing when it comes to collecting garbage.
Because you know, you know, consumption can never be kind of estimated. You don't know how much they're going to eat, throw away. And a 15-yarder for 40 units as a property manager is not that big.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I certainly can't speak to the capacity of a 15-yard dumpster. However, what I can tell you is, if that dumpster's got to be emptied every day, it'll be emptied every day. If it's got to be emptied every three days, it'll be emptied every, every three days. It's not necessarily going to be a once-a-week deal. It's whatever is needed to keep the place clean, that's what will happen.
I'm done. What about questions?
There's one other issue that I want to address. I spoke to a lawyer today who's here tonight, and he'll be talking to you in a bit, I think. He represents the Methodist Church. And he had a couple of issues that he wanted to discuss with me, one of which was the conduct of the construction activity while the new building was being constructed. Will there be a crane involved? Will the crane use as its, as its staging area, Temple Court itself? What will happen during the course of construction? And the answer is, to the extent there will be a crane, a crane involved, and there probably will be at least to pick up trusses and things like that during, sporadically during the course of construction, any such crane will be located in the rear parking lot. It will not be on the street. As far as debris and that kind of stuff is concerned, there will be tracking pads, there will be fencing appropriate to erosion and sediment control, and the, the kind of construction activity, and the concern being that they've got a nursery school across the street at the church, and the church's backyard. And what's going to happen with the kids? Are they going to be exposed to dust and all this other stuff? Construction activity similar to this goes on in schools while schools are in session. There are pro forma requirements that are put in place by the building code and others that will protect health and safety of neighbors, including children across the street. So that, all I can tell you is that we will construct this thing in compliance with the building code and other regulations. We are sensitive to the issue raised with respect to the nursery school, and certainly aren't going anyplace, so should any issues come up, we would be available to address any such issues. I should have mentioned that.
Thank you, Barry.
In my presentation.
Yes, Deborah.
You said that none of these units will be in the affordable housing?
That's correct.
Why? Are, are they exempt, or what?
They, well, yes, they are exempt. And they're, they're exempt under 8-30G, the affordable housing statute, which is the basis upon which most affordable housing projects come into most, to all municipalities that don't meet the 10%, 10% threshold. Stratford doesn't, therefore, 8-30G is applicable to Stratford. So you can get affordable housing applications in Stratford. This is not one, because this is coming in under the TOD Regulation, not 8-30G, the affordable housing statute. And the TOD Regulation does not require any affordable units as part of the development proposal.
Well, just one follow, would the developer be open to the idea, they're not required, but would they be willing to provide?
Well, just.
One or two units of affordable?
I haven't discussed it with him, but I would not recommend it to him. And let me explain why. It impacts on the ability to get financing to construct the project, number one. Number two, affordable housing rentals in the town of Stratford are approximately the same rent per month as market rate rentals. Because of the average median income in the town of Stratford is high enough so that people who are living in an affordable apartment under the 8-30G regulation are paying approximately the same as what the guy next door who's in a non-affordable, all right? So that's the practical consequence. The other issue that is, that arises with respect to affordables is, we want affordables because we want Stratford to get to the 10% threshold. And that's the goal. So let's make believe this was a 10, 8-30G affordable. Under that regulation, 30% of the units would have to be affordable for 40 years. That's what that regulation says. 30% for 40 years have to be affordable. Thirty percent for forty years have to be affordable. Well, those thirty percent, let's say it's a hundred-unit project, those thirty units are gonna get added to your affordable housing, but the other seventy are not. Stratford is never going to get to the ten percent. Every affordable housing project that comes in has thirty percent affordable and seventy percent non-affordable. Do the arithmetic. It's, we're never gonna get to the ten percent based upon the affordable housing statute. The only way we're gonna get to ten percent, and Jay can tell you this, is if the state allows Success Village and Stony Brook Homes to be counted towards our affordables. That would add hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units to our affordable inventory. Right now, that can't be done, for a number of reasons. But don't focus too much on affordables, because whether it's an affordable or not affordable, we're never getting to the ten percent unless we are able someday to count Success and Stony Brook.
No, but what I will suggest is that they are going to start looking at efforts.
At what?
And they're gonna start judging us on efforts. So we might not hit the number, but they wanna see, what are you doing to get there? And they're going to change the laws to essentially say, it's not the number, but the effort that will judge a town.
Well, they've been doing that for a long time, Harold.
Well, it's gonna become law. It almost did this year.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Yeah, just, again, the height of the building is, I, I mean, I feel like you're, it's, I mean, in... It looks like it says sixty-nine feet, from what I can see.
From that, you gotta subtract elevation, the twenty-foot base elevation. If you go down to the bottom and look at the elevation at the base, it says twenty. Are you on M three oh one or two?
I'm on M two oh two.
Go to M three oh one or three oh two.
Okay.
And at the top, it'll say sixty-nine, and at the bottom, it'll say twenty. So the elevation of the ground at the base of the building is at elevation twenty. So that property is twenty feet above sea level, at the ground level.
Okay.
So you gotta subtract that twenty feet from the sixty-nine. That's why it's confused, that's what George was talking about when he said it's confusing. I was confused when I saw that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Before we move on, I just want to ask one final question from me. We, this development has forty-three spaces, of which forty-one are reserved for bedrooms, all total.
No, thirty-nine, thirty-nine are.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight units, of which two are two-bedroom, requires thirty-nine parking spaces.
Don't the two-bedrooms require two parking spaces?
No, they require one-point-two-five each.
Okay, so that gives us...
Thirty-nine parking spaces required, we're, we're showing forty-one.
And we have a total of forty-three?
Forty-three, excuse me, forty-three.
So that means we have four extra parking spaces theoretically for retail?
Correct.
Okay. And I have a good friend who wanted, wanted me to ask this question. Would this project consider having an EV charging station for the residents of the building?
Well, I mean, we just got, we just got through here in the vault.
Well, you could, you could put a vault in the basement underneath the, where the only, the only person seeing it would be the cemetery.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna say yes to that question, Mr. Jones.
Okay, I asked it. The other thing is, in all of our projects in planning and zoning, we've been very good about asking for bike facilities, not just a bike rack. A bike facility is an interior space where people can have a safe and secure place to park their bikes and their baby strollers and everything else.
Well, I, I did discuss that with my client. The bike, the bike racks that are located in the front of the building, in that alcove, are not anticipated to be used by the residents of this building. They're anticipated by, to be used by people going up and down Main Street.
Right where the freeway is. I understand that, no, I understand.
It's anticipated that the people inside the building who have bikes are gonna take their bikes up in the elevator with them and put them in their apartments. That's what, that's what I would expect to do.
Okay. It's not the way we're going with new construction now across the country. I, I just, I'm pushing the point with everybody, I'm not singling you out.
It's a good point, and as a matter of fact, coming out of the ARB, in order for us to anchor the building more, we did expand the rear staircase and created a storage room, and that would be an ideal spot for that location.
Perfect. We need enough places for thirty? You can hang them up on top of each other, there's a million ways to, to do that.
You can ride a train station.
Well, theoretically, these are people that are the new Stratford, that don't have cars, that will ride their bikes and take the train. So if we're gonna really have that full complement, we need to be thinking about all of these. And now, we're gonna go to the audience, unless there's another comment from any of the commissioners.
Just a quick one, and just for confirmation, per John Casey's comments and issues, all those have been addressed?
It's my understanding they seem to be. Jay?
So, so I think that if the commission feels that this application is worthy of an approval, you would condition that approval that, and I, I believe I heard the applicant say that they have no problem complying with every condition from the town engineer, but I, I still recommend, and I've talked this over with the town engineer, you know, he's gonna work with the applicant before they submit a building permit, and he would give written confirmation to me, hey, Jay, twenty-five ninety complies with all of my comments on the email dated here.
And we're agreeable to that.
And you guys have been showing the, the right response to things, so...
Right.
Part of me that's offering to be trusting about this. So far, you've come back with all the changes that we've talked about. Did that answer you? Okay, now, I would like to open this up for anybody in support of this application. Is there, anybody here would like to speak in support of it? Second time, is there anybody who would like to speak in support? Hearing none, I now will take anybody who's here to speak in opposition to the project. Please give your name and your address.
Good, good evening. Edward Schofield, one forty Butternut Lane in Stratford, lifelong resident. I'm also a member of the United Methodist Church next door, and I'm the lawyer Barry referred to a few moments ago as someone who had spoken to him a couple times about some of the concerns that the church has about the development. I would think it would not be necessary to introduce the Stratford United Methodist Church to this body, but having watched the entirety of the ARB proceeding, where it was suggested that, you know, it's sort of a wasteland back there on, you know, over by the new development, quite to the contrary, the church is an active member of, of this community. We have about two-hundred-and-fifty members who are still active in the church. I have with me today, and some or all of them may wish to address this body, our pastor, Reverend Suhei Kim, along with Mr. Steve James, who's the president of our Board of Trustees, and Frank Damiano, Attorney Frank Damiano, who is our lay leader, and, and in addition, other members of the church are here today. We had a Zoom meeting, this has come up rather quickly, and it, the notice, through no fault of the, the applicant or, or the commissioner or anyone else, we just began focusing on this in the last couple days. We had a Zoom meeting last night with many members of the congregation in attendance, and we discussed some of the concerns that arose when we took a, a look at these plans. The first one, and I'll go in reverse order, because Barry has already, Attorney Knott has already addressed this, was there was a concern about what would construction look like? When we first spoke, he wasn't sure whether there would be some limitation on traffic on Temple Court during construction. We do have, if you look at the, I'm not sure whether it's clear, I haven't seen those photographs that he handed up earlier, I'm not sure whether it's clear from any of those photographs just how close the preschool playground is to the site where the new building, the addition, is going to be put up. So I think it's a natural concern for the folks who, including members of the preschool staff who were on this same Zoom call, expressed a real concern that, safety concern, understandably, not only, but I, I credit what Attorney Knott said. It sounds like the applicant is already a taxpayer and a respected member of the commercial community, and I'm, we'd be counting on them to follow every appropriate guideline, and we would hold them to it. So that's one area of concern that we did want to express. I want to talk now, though, a little bit about parking. There's a little bit, bear with me, there's a little background here. Some of this is not directly relevant to your charge as a zoning commission, but I think it's very important that you understand the background of the parking issue. Back, back, excuse me, back in nineteen-seventy-nine, a group of doctors bought that building, the Masonic Temple building, it was used for medical offices for many, many years. When they did so, they did it conditioned upon an agreement with the church, that the church would have a shared parking agreement. There are fourteen spots, if you look at your diagram, it's reflected on several, but on the site plan, SP one, if you orient Main Street being at your left, you're, you're turning right into Temple Court, the development is to your right. To your left, the northerly direction, there are some parking spots indicated, there are fourteen. Those are spots that belong to the church. You'll see they're quite close to what used to be the entrance to the medical building, they're right off Temple Court. So the doctors were concerned that they wanted to have enough parking for their patients. That parking was gonna be a lot closer to that entrance than the back parking lot that they used, which is where the new development is. So the arrangement in this parking agreement, which was a thirty-year term, we'll get to that in a minute, starting in nineteen-eighty, at the time of the acquisition, was that the doctors could use those fourteen spaces during the day, Monday through Friday, when they would be seeing patients. In exchange, the church, on Sundays, when they have a great, the only day they really have a great demand for parking, other than sometimes during other religious services such as funerals or weddings, typically on a Saturday also for funerals and weddings often, their parking was going to be a, a sort of a use of the area that's shaded on SP one, which is where the new building's going. So that parking is going to be, under this plan, obliterated. Now, the question of the continued vitality of the agreement is a legal question, and that's not, I'm not gonna trouble you with that. That's something that, that's on, that's something that I have to consider, I've just come to it. There's certainly, Barry and I spoke to, about it very, very briefly. No conclusion has been reached about that. From a zoning perspective, though, strictly backing off to looking at this from a zoning perspective, the TBD, is it TBD? I'm sorry, I'm not a zoning lawyer, unlike Barry, but my first time before this commission, but the development, I did read the regulations, and I read, I saw online the very nice brochure that was done back in two thousand and fourteen, when you folks hired a consultant to help develop this particular transit district, and I read all about the various success stories in various pedestrian-friendly places. Our concern is that although, there's no question, but the applicant has complied with the, the strict guidelines of the requirement of the forty spaces, of the forty-three, thirty-nine, whether it's thirty-nine or forty, they've got their forty-three spaces. As you all know, under twelve-five-two, if this were a normal apartment building, for outside the district, you'd need over sixty spaces. That requirement, by the way, allows for, strictly allows for, for instance, guest visitors. This, unlike the doctor's use, which was Monday through Friday, we've got a residential use here, and one is gonna put an enormous burden on parking there, because those spots are gonna fill up. I, I question, this is not Brooklyn, folks have more than one car, even families. Now, I know, the, the regulations are the regulations, that decision was made some years ago. The reality is, because you folks have, have a responsibility under the special case exception and otherwise, to consider, to consider the entire area. What is the effect? This is not an isolated building, it's in a context. The context is neighborhood. The next-door neighbor has been there for two-hundred years. So putting aside even this agreement, what impact will it have? Here's the impact I can foresee. My, my job, I'm a litigator, I look backwards. Your job is to look forwards. What could happen? Those fourteen spaces, I can tell you right now, on Saturdays and Sundays, when we want to be using them for our elderly population of the church, they're gonna be filled up with people who've stayed overnight, visitors to the folks at the new development. It's just, it's, it's a reality of what's likely to happen. Now, there will be controversy, there will be enforcement, there will be towing, there will be all of those things, perhaps, if I'm right. I may be proven wrong. Maybe forty spaces is plenty, even though the normal apartment building would need more than sixty. So we're very troubled by the, again, wholly apart from the legal issue, we're troubled by the concern that this, in this context, the transit business district's parking requirement may not be a good fit. A, I don't think Stratford has quite the pedestrian, not yet, it'd be great to see it someday, when you have families who maybe don't even need a car, you know, they can walk to the, where are you gonna get your groceries? You have to have, so, so we have, the, the, the idea that each one of these apartments is gonna be a one-car family seems aspirational at best. So there's a real concern about parking and how that's going to impact, impact us. And as, in terms of the, the church and the community, I should just mention briefly, and other folks can address this, it's not, the church is not an isolated religious body that does nothing but meet on Sundays. This is an active part of our community. Cub Scouts, Boy Scout Troop Seventy-Two, Girl Scouts, the community breakfast we have on Saturdays, the thrift shop, which is around the corner on the other side, on this side of the church, on the northerly side, the special events. There's gonna, many of the folks who, members of our church who pass away are buried in Union Cemetery, there's the traffic that goes in and out during those sad occasions. So the, the parking is probably the one issue that we're, we're most concerned about, because, partly because of the history, but also because our population, for instance, one of the reasons for the overflow, and we do have a parking lot in the back, Barry, I'm sure will mention to you, and it's true, and, and on a normal Sunday, could probably, especially if we don't have visitors from the new development parking back there, we'll probably be fine. One thing is that we often will have, you can picture it, not often, but occasionally you have Christmas, Easter, you know, the folks who come out of the woodwork and attend church on those days. Where are people gonna park? If we've lost, because we've lost about forty spaces that we were using under this agreement for well on forty-three years. Where are they gonna park? They're gonna have to cross the street and park at Stratford High and walk across the street. So when your charge, if I look at the regulations, and again, pardon me if I, because I'm, I'm new to this, you talk about issues about safety, about safety in the streets, Mr. Knott mentioned, traffic concerns, again, context of the community, a special case exception, even the special case exception under twenty-point-two-point-one speaks about whether the proposed use will be compatible and harmonious with the existing neighborhood development. Well, this is not a harmonious concept, the parking. I raised this concern with Mr. Knott, and I don't fault him at all for this, he said, look, this is all we can do. Our design calls for thirty-eight apartments, ergo forty spaces, and you can see, especially if you look at the coverage, the lot coverage, they are maxed out. We get that. I said to him, I suggested, maybe there's some way we could talk about some kind of arrangement, we have some spots to the back, they have some spots right along the front on the side, they're on Temple Court. I don't have a solution. We have a concern, not a solution. I, I rise in opposition, but it's, it's a measured one. I will tell you, I'll share with you, that, that were a number of folks on the Zoom call last night, who are Stratford taxpayers, as I am, who are pleased to see economic development in our town. That's a positive thing. But a little bit selfishly, we see an impact on this that was perhaps not fully thought out by the applicant. So those are a highlight of our concerns. I'm gonna introduce to you, if I may now, Reverend Kim, who's our pastor.
Thank you for listening for our concerns tonight, and we are really would like to support this economic development right next door, but we're probably most adversely affected here, and as you can know, the Union Cemetery is behind the rear area of the project, but as you can imagine, being across of the, you know, Dennis and Darcy, and also, we're a default place to hold a funeral, anybody who's going to be buried in the cemetery. So, and we're yet alive, so we would like, thank you for hearing us out tonight. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition? Your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Frank Damiano, I live at four-seventy Harvest Ridge Road in Stratford.
Good evening, my name is Frank Demiano, I live at 470 Harvest Ridge Road in Stratford. I'm the lay leader at the church, at the Stratford United Methodist Church. I don't really have too much new to offer, I would like to underline what Ed had said, what Attorney Schofield said. I would like to emphasize also the fact that, as he had indicated, there is a preschool there, and there is a, within, I guess, less than 100 feet of where this construction's going to happen, is a playground, where the kids go out every single day when it's nice weather, in the spring, fall, and summer, obviously not in the winter. And that concern, I just would like to underline that, that's, that's something that we, we would have to be concerned about. There is significant traffic on Temple Court during drop-off and pickup times, by parents going to pick up the children. They do park in the back of the church, where our, another parking lot of ours is, but they go back and forth there, you know, and there's a significant number of cars. At our peak, we had 70 children there, going to preschool and daycare. So that's not a significant number of vehicles that are traversing Temple Court, it is not a sleepy little road, it is actually pretty heavily used during the day when the daycare is open, which is every day, and then, then the weekends is when we have services. So we're looking at, you know, enough to be concerned with, in terms of traffic seven days a week. So I just want you to keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. And I don't have anything else to say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone's comments here tonight. Is there anybody else that we, one last time? Hearing, nothing, none?
Motion to close the public portion.
Let's throw my motion again.
Mr. Knott.
Glenn, I'm very disappointed, you were trying to shut me up, although I can, I can understand why. Ed mentioned the 1979 lease, there was a 1979 lease between the doctors who owned the building, who bought the building at that time, and the church. That, it was not a lease, it was a parking agreement, shared parking agreement, that was precipitated by the parking regulations in place then and now for medical office buildings. You need one space for 165 square feet of interior space. Doctors' offices require more parking than any other use in town, except restaurants. So when the doctors bought this building, and it had previously been a Masonic temple, they didn't have adequate parking. There is a regulation under our, it's called the shared parking regulation, and it says, among other things, that if there is off-site parking within 200 feet of the subject premises, and you can enter into a written agreement with the owner of the off-site parking, allowing you to use the off-site parking, you can count the off-site parking in your parking computation. So when these people went in for special case approval in '79, they needed an additional 14 parking spaces. They went to the church at that time, and asked them to enter into this parking agreement that Ed made reference to. That parking agreement did go into effect in 1979, it had a 30-year term, it expired in 2009, it is no, I say it's no longer valid, he says it is. Pat will tell you that that dispute between Ed Schofield and me is a, is a civil matter that you should not consider yourself with, because it doesn't impact on zoning, it's something that needs to be resolved between the two people who have the disagreement. Now, I, we heard from, from Ed, and from the last gentleman who spoke, about the traffic that goes up and down Temple Court to service funerals, and daycare, and dropping off, and picking up, and this, that, and the other thing. The traffic that you got to be concerned with, is not the traffic that's generated by the church. That has nothing to do with your charge with respect to this application. The traffic that you have to be concerned with, is the traffic that's generated by our use. And the church's problems with respect to parking and traffic, while we are sympathetic to them, and understand that they may be real-world problems, are not problems that affect this development, they're problems that affect the church, not this TOD application. Thank you.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Second, anybody?
Second.
By Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. We're now going to go to 750 Main Street. Oh, 7050.
70.
7050.
What do you think I was doing, sitting over there?
That's why you were late?
What's that?
That's why you were late?
No, I was, I was on time. If Mr. Francis had been just another few minutes later, we'd be done by now.
special case approval to construct a self-serve gas station and convenience store in a CA zone.
Did he not pass it down? Hey, 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 hey! Come on, guys, we're going to be here all night.
I promise.
There you go, Ben, the floor is yours.
Not Ben Proto.
Let's go.
I promise no EV stations in this conversation.
Oh, we'd, no, we'd love those.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Benjamin Proto, I'm an attorney with an office at 2885 Main Street in Stratford. I represent petitioner, Superstop.
Oh, there's two pages?
Stratford Superstop Realty LLC. As, as the petition indicates, this property is located at 7050 Main Street in Stratford. This property, as you may all recall, is the old Don's Mobile and Auto Repair Station. You have some photos that we passed out this evening, of what its current condition is. The interesting and uniqueness of this particular property is it's a little over 11,000 square feet in total size, and is completely surrounded by Sikorsky. It kind of sits right in the middle of Sikorsky's frontage on Main Street. It has been a gasoline and service station, auto repair shop, to at least the early 1940s, if not before then, and looking back through the zoning books, there had been a number of petitions over the years to do different things there, while also servicing cars and selling gasoline, including at one point in time, we think they came in to have a store, which we now call a convenience store, back then, probably would have been called something else. The applicant is proposing to completely renovate the property, demo everything, take everything down, and build a gasoline station with two gas pumps, four dispensers, two, one on each side of each dispenser, and a 1,500-square-foot convenience store. We've been to the Architecture Review Board, they had recommended four, made four recommendations. We have complied with three of them. One of them was, and if you look at the plans, you'll see, on the right side of the building, facing the building, the right side of the building, is a ladder that is attached to the building. That ladder is required by code, the ARB recommended that that ladder be moved to the rear of the building. The issue with moving it to the rear of the building is if you, when you look at the plan, you see it's a severe drop-off at the back of the building, making it unsafe to put a ladder back there for anybody to use.
I'm going to make it easy on you, the ARB said "if possible," so you're saying it's not.
Well, Mr. Pobanski's comments indicate full compliance, so we just wanted to let you know, there's one we can't comply with, for a safety reason, the other three we have complied with. In addition, the property required three variances. One was from Section 3.14, which was an activity within 50 feet of a water course. One was for Section 7.1, having to do with the impervious area in the front. It is still not in compliance with the regulation, but previously, less than 1% of the property was non-impervious. We're taking it now to over 20% non-impervious, but we're still not in full compliance, but the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance for that. And the second was 7.14, which was the use of the rear of the property for parking deliveries, things along those lines, again, for the same reason that we can't have the ladder there, the severe drop-off, but under our regulations, so long as we meet the requirements to the side yards, that rear yard is not required. We could have done one of two things, we could have come to you and asked you to waive that, or gotten a variance from the ZBA. We thought it was more appropriate to get a variance to do that, and the, and the ZBA granted that variance as well. So what we're proposing now is, as I said, a convenience store gas station operation. The site has been relatively not pretty, shall we say, even when it was operational, it was an old gas station, service station, and I think probably did very well up there for many, many years, and has been abandoned for some time now. So it's our, our hope to be able to bring that property back to life, with, as you're going to see as we go through this, a very attractive building and operation. My clients operate these facilities throughout the state of Connecticut, this I believe will be their third facility in Connecticut, and they have a few others right now planned in a, a number of other towns. This would be very similar to a small, I'm, I've been before this commission a number of times for Cumberland Farms, they tend to be much larger operations, the mobile station, the all, I forget what we call it, the all-town, which is down the street from here, from this site, so a similar operation.
Is this a chain operation?
Pardon me?
Is this a chain operation?
It's, it's, I guess it depends on how you define chain. The owners own a number of these, but they're not a franchise, let's put it that way. So the owners have, right now, three facilities in, in the state, and I think they have currently two that are planned in front of other zoning commissions in other towns. So right now, what I'd like to do is introduce our civil engineer. Also, just, our, we have our, our architect unfortunately had a personal situation and is out of town. He is available, if we need him, by phone. Our engineer has worked closely with him and is completely conversant in our architectural designs, but if we do need the architect, he is available, and he apologizes for not being able to be with us. So right now, I want to bring up our engineer, our Marcus Potluck, from Godfrey and Hoffman, to talk about the site, the site design, and how we plan on utilizing that site. So where'd he go? There he is.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Marcus Potuck, I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor with an office at 26 Broadway in North Haven, Connecticut, and I'm here representing the applicant. The existing site, as, as Attorney Proto mentioned, has an existing building, an existing canopy with, with two pumps, and, and is almost entirely a paved surface, other than the slope to the rear, which is too steep to even traverse safely. Our proposal is to remove essentially everything, including all of the pavement, creating a new building with a front sidewalk, a new canopy, which is slightly larger and setbacks slightly from the road, with the eight required parking spaces, a dumpster enclosure, our, our underground tanks for gas, for, for the gasoline to be under a concrete pad, as required, and our, our storm drainage, a new storm drainage, which currently does not exist. The, the existing condition, everything from this, essentially the street line, so the state highway line, into the lot drains, sheet flows off of our lot, onto Sikorsky, and into their drainage ditch at the base of the slope. We propose to modify the elevations, so that everything from the street line that, that we are paving, including the building and the, the canopy, will remain on our site all the way up to a 50-year storm, and a very, very small amount of the storm drainage will, will be discharged into a large riprap level spreader to the side of our building, and allowed to overflow down the slope. That is a very small amount, like 71 cubic feet, in a 100-year storm. So we essentially are capturing everything on-site and keeping it on-site. So the existing site has two, two, two entrances, which we are narrowing to comply with DOT's requirement that driveways be 30 feet wide, or no wider than 30 feet at the street line. So we've necked those two driveways down, which increases our island in the front, and allows us a slightly larger green space in the front, if you will. We have landscaping to the side. We propose to leave the existing sign and just renovate it for the, the gas pylon, if you will, that says what the price of gas is, and identifies the gas station as a gas station, so that, that structure essentially will stay and just be renovated, and look very similar to how it looks today. So we move into... Are grading a drainage plan. As, as I stated, all of our on-site drainage is going to remain on-site, we have two new catch basins, and, and all of our other roof structures are piped to those catch basins, and into a set of recharger systems, plastic units enveloped in stone, to maintain all of our drainage on-site in an underground system.
So that you meet the 1-inch stormwater storage requirement?
So, so the 1-inch storage requirement, based on the site of our si, the, the size of our site, would be 712 cubic, cubic feet of volume. Our, our system actually has, I wrote it down here, 2,344 cubic feet of...
So essentially, when these requirements go up, you're...
We, we should, we'll be already...
Capacity for it.
Yes, we, we have vastly more capacity than is currently required, and the reason for that is there is no, when we looked at regrading and redesigning the, the site, there was no easy way to capture and then discharge that water onto the slope as it, as it does now, and into that drainage ditch. So i, in order to be able to handle the water, we, we essentially decided that it's best to keep it on-site. to keep it on-site, and, and we, and we've done so as best we can with a very small discharge, which would go into...
So as planned, you're not using that swale at the back of the, on Sikorsky property?
It's, it's not our swale, so while we may have some riparian rights to drain to it at this time, and, and certainly some of the slope and whatnot will continue because the slope that...
And an 8-inch rain would probably end up there.
It will, it's, some of it's gonna go there anyway, as it does now, but our, our goal was to control and, and maintain as much of our water as we can, keep it on-site so that we can maintain the catch basins, clean them out, and dispose of any sediments and things like that, that accumulate in those catch basins in an appropriate manner. So that was the intent of...
Good story. Thank you.
Of keeping it all on-site. We also analyzed, well, we did some landscaping. There's not a lot of green space on this site, either existing or, or in our proposed plan. We, we've added, you know, a dogwood and, and some plantings on, on this island and in and around the sign pylon. That's pretty much the extent of the added plantings that we proposed at this time. We've obviously proposed, you know, a silt fence all the way around the entire perimeter of our construction, as well as a construction entrance to be installed after much of the pavement has been ripped up for erosion controls. Once the catch basins are in, obviously, we will put sit sacks in them and maintain that system as clean as we can until the fight, the site is fully complete, and then clean it all out. As I said, the, the goal is to keep everything on our site, so the first thing that would be constructed would be the wall that, that essentially contains all of our grading, so all of our water, even in silt, will remain on-site during the construction. That's, that's the plan. We also analyzed the truck traffic routes. Do you have it here? I'll try to see if there are. Part of our, part of our consideration of, of how this, this site would be utilized and, and how deliveries would be made, we would limit our delivery, our deliveries of gas and, and that to certainly off-peak times, later in the evening, very, very early in the morning, and have the, the trucks come essentially northbound on, on 110, pull, pull into the first station, back up some, deliver to the, the, the underground tanks, and then pull directly back out and continue northbound, and there, there just isn't room to be able to maneuver to, to head southbound.
Question, is that the auxiliary lot, I don't know how it's on the right-hand side there that I'm, that we're looking at? There's another piece of property that was, I read in some of the description, is that what I'm looking at? To the right of the building? Oh, that whole buil, that whole area there?
That, that's all owned by Sikorsky, so, and, and as well as, like, everything around, it is owned by Sikorsky.
Where is Sikorsky fence? It runs...
Sikorsky fence does come down across here and then come back, so there is area that appears as though it is part of this parcel that is not...
But it's not.
Part of our parcel. And, and indeed, some of this area, over the years, was apparently used by the gas station to store cars and things like that, but we do not, we have curbs and whatnot that, that will cut that...
Sikorsky's bigger than you are, so don't...
That use, yes. That's right. They, they have much more than one attorney. Thanks. Well, that may be true. And then just as, as a final, the architect repaired, you know, essentially a front elevation and eleva, you know, views of the, the canopy with the pumps for your consideration.
And you're not the architect, right?
I am not the architect, I'm the civil engineer.
Are you speaking for him tonight?
I, I can...
Or Mr. Proto can do that if, does this rendering here represent, the ARB was asking you to lower the side towers, does this represent the lowering of them?
Yes.
So it's, they're, they're lower than the peak?
Yes.
Which is what they'd ask you to do?
Yes.
They, just, so you're aware, originally, the, the building had more volume to it. It's, it's a two-story building that only utilizes one story. They like that concept, and they particularly liked the gable, and they like the way the, the logo was utilized, but they thought the, the towers overwhelmed what they really liked about it and asked it to be reduced, and we lowered to reduce the mass overall, which is what we did. They particularly liked the windows up top, but they thought everything got lost because of the towers.
Have they seen this with the shed added to it?
The ARB, I, I don't know if it has been shared with them. Obviously, we provided the new plans to, to everyone at zoning.
Sleeping dogs. It's okay. Just keep moving forward. Yeah, no, they've, they've spoken.
So that, that's, I will take any other kind of, you know, questions.
Okay. Let me now go to questions, then. Lenny, any questions? Straight down the row. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? I'm not gonna ask any questions either, but I will go to the audience now.
No, no, we've got...
Oh, you want to rebut?
Yeah, we have a little more for you.
You go ahead, let's hear it.
Not quite fair enough, but we have a little more for you.
Okay.
We do want to talk about, because it is a very busy area, particularly during shift changes at Sikorsky, so we did retain a traffic engineer, Mr. Gregory Del Rio, who's with us tonight, that will give you an overview of the traffic in that area. It is a busy area, and as you know, and as Greg will talk about, DOT recently, recent past redesigned that entire area, which I think someone who travels it pretty regularly, they did a great job in that redesign. But Greg, if you can give us just some information on the traffic, and the traffic situation as a result of this particular site.
Sure. Thank you. Greg Del Rio, professional engineer with Hardisty and Hanover in Norwalk. So, yeah, we, we provided a traffic evaluation letter for this project, summarizing the conditions as well as the trip generation, because of the change, slight change from a gas station with a service station to a gas station with a convenience market. So in terms of trip generation, it's, according to the, you know, we, we always use the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation for the two different types of gas stations, and the difference for, it, it's still maintaining four fueling positions, there's two on each side of each pump, so that doesn't change, and that, therefore, the only change really is the convenience store. And it's less than 2,000 square feet, it's about 1,500 square feet. So in the, in, in its current state, it generates about 20 to 30 trips, depending on week, which peak period, an hour, and with the convenience store, it's about 10 more, 10 more visits an hour, it's gonna be about 30 to 40. So it's not much of a, not much of a difference. It's, to the south, the roadway is tangent, and to the north, it, it curves away from you slightly, so sightlines are, are adequate and efficient and up to standards, as far as, you know, seeing oncoming traffic for the speeds and for the geometry and the levels of the volume that's there. And so there's really no anticipated traffic impacts, per se, or queuing, or, or safety issues. We did look at the crash data between the two existing intersections on both sides of us and that whole corridor, and we didn't see any significant patterns. The one thing we do look at, a little bit of a, besides just summarizing all the safety data, we do look at the, what we call the right-angle crashes, which is typical for access to sites coming in and out. Those are the ones you see rear ends, that's not really caused by site access, it's really the, the right angles, and for the last three years, there were no, and it was open until, what, a year ago, I believe? So that falls within the three-year period that we were looking at, and there were no right-angle crashes at, at that location. There were some further north, there were some further south, but at the gas station itself, there was, there was no right-angle crashes. We have the two points of access, and we have parking on both sides, so that if you enter from either side, and you're not using the gas pumps, you don't need to crisscross through the site, and you can just go right to, to parking on both sides. I think that summarizes most of the stuff that we, we looked at. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Listeners? No?
We'll just summarize real quick for you. First of all, as I think Mr. Habanski will tell you, we need to go to wetlands. There is a man-made concrete drainage ditch on Sikorsky's property that's within 50 feet of what we're doing, and so we have to go get their blessing. And I think, as you've heard tonight, we're gonna greatly improve what's gonna flow or what's not gonna flow into that drainage ditch. In particular, the, the previous operation probably would've put substantially more bad stuff, oils, fluids, brake fluids, steering fluids, things like that, into it greases, whereas we're not gonna be doing that, and we're actually gonna be capturing most all of our water and fluids on-site. So we're gonna hopefully be to them at their November meeting, we'll be filing that application tomorrow. I believe it won't require a public hearing, that the commission can take that up administratively is what we're hoping, and once we get that, obviously, we'll let Mr. Habanski know, and you can hopefully approve this at your next meeting. And this, again, really quick, just for the record, you all know what your requirements are under special case approvals. Mr. Habanski states those very clearly in his comments to you. We meet all of those requirements. The, the property is a commercial property surrounded entirely by industrial, and we're gonna continue to use it as commercial, and the plan of development calls for future use of the property to be commercial. So we're, we're meeting into that. We've seen that there's no severe, any traffic impact to it, there's not gonna be any light odor, gas, any bad stuff, dusts or whatnot flowing around. There's no adverse impact to the many millions of dollars of Sikorsky's property valuation because of this site. In fact, it probably improves the look of Sikorsky site as you look at the Sikorsky site from what it looks at now. And there's, there were no police or fire comments, so we're assuming that the police and fire have no issues with it. Overall, at the end of the day, we think this is going to take a property that's been utilized as a gasoline service station, continue to use it as a gas dispensing station and a convenience store, create a really beautiful-looking building. This is directly across the street from Lord Chamberlain, and I think, I think we can all agree that Lord Chamberlain has done a phenomenal job in the maintenance and manicure and the look of their property, and that's by, as has Sikorsky with the, with the continued maintenance of their property, their fencing system and whatnot, and then there's this sitting kind of in the middle of it right now. This will, I think, change that look, it will change the feel of that particular area, it will improve the look and feel of that area, it will enhance, it's an entryway to Stratford for us, and is, I think it will enhance that as well. So overall, we meet all the conditions for special case requirement, other than obviously the wetlands approval, which we believe we will get. So when you do take this up, we would ask for your favorable approval of this application. With that, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any additional questions any member may have. Any questions? And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, we had already previously submitted our certificates of mailing, those are in the file. There was the Sikorsky and Lord Chamberlain, those were submitted prior to this evening's hearing, so those should be in the file as well.
And just so you know, Sikorsky was just in here last month with their project, and we asked a lot of the same questions, so we are not signaling out small business.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, scheduling question for Attorney Proto. Do you know when the next wetlands meeting is?
Yes.
Because we do things a little differently in November, because our, the Fourth Tuesday lands on Thanksgiving.
Right.
So our public hearing is November 9th.
And I think we fall, unfortunately, after that.
So what I would say that is that you grant this...
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure if it's the 9th or the 16th. I believe...
Wednesday.
The 3rd Wednesday, so it would be the 16th.
So, so Attorney Proto, I would ask that maybe that you grant this commission an extension of 35 days if you are unable to secure some documentation from in wetlands, that this actually be continued until the December...
Do you want to keep the public hearing open, or do you...
The public hearing opens, so, will the record open so that we can get the comments from the wetlands commission?
Yes, that's not, that's not, we would agree to the extension needed.
And that makes it easiest for us to vote. It answers all, most all the questions that we would be asking.
Right.
Once we get that from...
And that would be December 14th, and if we're able to meet earlier, great. If not, that's the, that's when we would need the extension until.
And I'm gonna talk with Kelly tomorrow when we submit and see if this is something that can be done in a way before the 16th to comply with you, and if not, then we do what we gotta do.
And if, and if not, if you could just get us a letter, grant, giving us that extension.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, anybody? Do we have anybody? Did I already ask this?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience who's opposed? Is there anybody in the audience who's opposed? Is there anybody in the audience who supports this? Is there anybody in the audience who supports this? Hearing none?
A motion to continue.
A motion to table?
A motion to continue.
A motion to table. Contingent on, on the wetlands, um...
Yes. We could, but it just, that's enough, right? Motion to continue.
Continue on the wetlands.
Someone, depending, waiting on, on the wetlands commission. Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Don't, don't break down yet.
Hello. I, I, I don't know. I don't know why they do that. Test.
We did 50, who's, who's tonic out of order, correct? Yes. So, now we're going to do new items number six. Will someone please read that for me?
New item number six, 520 Success Avenue, petition of Comm Link Incorporated, seeking to convert a warehouse building into seven residential units incidental to an office and warehouse building in the CA zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board. My name is Nicholas Owen. I'm developer in the town of Stratford, and I maintain business offices at 792 East Broadway, Stratford, Connecticut. And I'm here tonight in connection with this petition for Comm Link Inc., 520 Success Avenue, Stratford, where we are attempting to build additional seven residential units on this property and enhance this property substantially. And before I go into my presentation in chief, what I would like to pass around...
May I, before you do that, did you get letters from area residents?
I do.
Do you want to pass those over?
In one second, if you don't mind. Okay.
Sure.
I would like to pass around to the commission, which I'd also like to enter into an exhibit, pictures of the existing property as it currently exists. These pictures were taken today. That's going to be entered in as an exhibit, and also additional pictures, so you can get the flavor of what this property currently looks like. This could all be one exhibit. Further, of course, we are required to send out notices, and I have the receipts of mailing, which I would like to submit to the commission as required under your regulation. The, I have two representatives here tonight, two experts. One is Chris DeAngelis, who will go over the site situation with you and the proposed, proposed site improvements, which will enhance this property. They also have Pat Rose from Rose and Tizo here with us tonight, so we can go over the architectural and actual building architecture and what it will look like when it is completed. So, I'd like to call Chris to the microphone at this time, so he can make his presentation to the board.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Chris DeAngelis, partner with Cabezas DeAngelis. Our office is in Bridgeport. Here's the, the site plan showing the property. It's an existing L-shaped building. This portion of the existing building, which is currently a storage building, would be converted into, into four residential units. And then, there would be a small, two-story addition on the end, on the east end of the existing building that would contain another three residential units for a total of seven residential units. These would be five one-bedrooms and two, two-bedroom units. Parking for the, for the residential units, we do have a parking table. It calculates out to 11 and a half or 12 parking spaces. Additionally, when we account for the existing uses in the existing building to remain, the commercial and non-off, non-medical office building, we had, we come up with another 20 parking spaces that are required. So, the 12 for the residential, plus the 20 for the commercial use, yields a demand of 32 spaces, and we are able to fit 32 parking spaces on the Stratford side of the property. Remember, the front of the par, property is, is within the city of Bridgeport, but we are able to meet the parking requirement within the Stratford corporate limits. And that does not include an additional 14 spaces that are within a leased area, long-term lease area that the, that the applicant owns. In addition to meeting the parking requirements, we meet all the zoning requirements. The zoning table is on the plan, and we meet them, most of them fairly easily, easily. Maximum building coverage, 50%. We're only at 26. Maximum impervious surface, 80%. We're only at 70. Open space, we, we meet exactly 20% required, 20% provided. Building height, we meet. Outdoor recreational space per dwelling unit, we meet. And then, of course, the parking. We only got two comments from John Casey, our city engineer. One of them refers to sewer from the site, and his, his question was if sewer is going to be directed to the town of Stratford, that fees would be generated, but in fact, the sewer from this property crosses over the town line and enters into the Bridgeport system. His second comment was regarding storm drainage, which we do have.
So, there are no sewer hookups to Stratford WPCA? It all goes to Bridgeport?
Correct, correct. There is a sewer lateral that comes out of the building, runs through private property on Success Village, and then it runs down Success Avenue to the Seaview plant in Bridgeport. That's correct. Want to go a little bit more deep?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked it. City of Bridgeport has indicated to us that there is a willingness for us to continue with a new, larger main through their village and connect to their sewer. Also, we have spoken to Stratford, and as long as we go before the Sewer Commission, and it gets approved, we may be able to hook up to the Stratford sanitary system. That's, with respect, that's really not the purview of this commission. We know that that is a second or third step that we need to take once approval is granted. We all, we have to go to the Sewer Commission, period.
Well, it is our purview in terms of safety.
That's correct.
So, this is the, the landscape plan. When you look at the photos that Nick showed you already, and you look at what we're proposing, you can see it's greatly enhanced, meets your zoning regulations as far as the materials, et cetera. And we have, you know, the required outdoor recreational space. It's a nice, large area, contiguous, could make for a nice playground area if the owner decides to do that. We're adding lighting around the perimeter of the parking lot. Currently, it's deficient in lighting. There's some kind of ad hoc lighting fixtures running around the parking lot. So, again, a, a, a much, much improved site with this application. Oh, and, and storm drainage, the, the one comment by John Casey is regarding the storm drainage, which we can comply with. It's, it has to do, again, with your MS4 requirements.
Excuse me, can you, one more time?
Yep. So, your city engineer, John Casey, made a comment about storm drainage, which we can comply with. I haven't done the calculations yet, but if it's not a burdensome requirement that we, that we...
In terms of keeping all the rainwater on, all the storm water on the property?
Yes, to a certain size storm is what he looks for. So, yes, that's, that's correct. So, other than that, I'll let Mr. Rose get into the...
Can you show me on, on this map, on this, where is the flood, there's a flood zone on this piece of property? I couldn't find it on any of the...
Hey, no, no, there's no flood zone.
None of this is in, within the flood plain?
You must have it mixed up. Yeah, yeah. No, we're far away from any, any river.
I swear that I did read it in, on something here, but maybe the...
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Any further questions?
I'd like to call Pat Rose up to the, to the microphone, and he can go over the architectural, the elevations and so on.
Good evening. Patrick Rose from Rose Tizo and Company, 35 Brentwood Avenue in Fairfield. Just to, no, I'll show them the flood plain first, and then we'll flip around more. Just to go through the, the building, the L-shaped building, which exists, and the three-story piece that's at this end that exists as storage. Right now, it's being converted. So, what we're doing is here, these, the first floor, these will remain storage on the first floor. So, they have garage doors out to the parking lot, and then there's a new stairway that's being added, associated with the units that'll be above the existing building. This being the offices. There's some garages here. Stairway that goes to the second floor, and then there's this building, which has a stairway that services the upper levels, and then stairways in the back as a second means of ingress out.
When you say storage, what kind of storage? Because I couldn't find any indication of what it is in terms of safety of, of renters in these buildings. What kind of storage are we looking at?
Nicholas Owen, again. Mr. Chairman, basically, it probably would be good for you guys to know what type of businesses are operated here, so you get a feeling on what's in there and what the storage is about and what equipment is out in the lot. There are some, and I'm glad you're sitting down, there are some 50 paper LLCs or corporations that work out of that facility. And by paper corporations, the same owners, for the most part, with the exception of their investors, work out of that office. There are 12 employees. It is strictly a paper operation. So, the storage is mostly boxes, the white boxes with the files in. And Mr. Habanski has been in there at least one occasion in the past, and I know we've seen it. And I've been out to the property with Mr. Habanski, I think it was last week, and we viewed the interior of an unfinished building in the back, and we build, we viewed the parking lot in the rear, which is in part shown on those pictures in that board that I gave you. Now, that is mostly extra construction equipment. There's concrete, there's some asphalt, there's broken down trucks, there's piping.
Pickup truck for sale.
I'm sorry? And there's a pickup truck for sale, which is depicted on the plan. Obviously, that will all be cleaned up once this project is approved and we are underway. It's very unsightly. It has a broken down chain link fence with vines growing on. It has razor wire on top, which will be removed. The entire parking lot, obviously, since it's going to be seven residential new units, it's going to be cleaned up, regraded, paved, lined, with all the facilities, the lighting and planting and green space area that is required under your regulation. But specifically, the storage is boxes on the interior and office space.
So, that still remains with the corporation that currently, the corporations that currently is using the office?
Yes, it's not going to be sold. They, they use, he has been there. Those companies have been there forever and ever in that location.
So, there's not going to be in, in, in and out, if you have...
Well, there's in and out for professionals. I mean, Patrick and Chris and I go in there to sit in, at the conference room and go over plans and brainstorm and see what is acceptable and what's not acceptable, so we can file petitions in front of the zoning board. But other than that, other than employees, professionals, doctors, lawyers, Indian chief, no.
I'm, I'm just concerned. I love mixed-use development.
We do too.
But I'm concerned that we make sure that we are not creating any hazards for people that have to deal with it. So, that's the only thing that I would send back to you is be mindful of it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we are, but if, if, if Mr. Habanski has think, thinks that I have misspoken about an issue, I am certainly happy to, to let him correct me, but he has been out.
Honestly, I don't, sure. Yeah, it's not just boxes. I mean, maybe, maybe the existing building, but the new, but so the new, the new construction, it's storage of restaurant materials and bar stools and pool tables and...
Yes.
And electronics, and it's, everything under the sun is being stored in there, so...
Not in the office space, and that would...
Not in the office space.
That's what I was specifically speaking about.
But we were talking about what businesses, I think, thought I heard, what businesses are being run out of here. So...
Now, once this project is approved, all of that material that I spoke of, and what Mr. Habanski just spoke about, will be moved off of the premises and located somewhere else. We can't have a storage facility, and there's not enough room there to construct seven units and have a storage facility for pool tables, restaurant equipment, broken down trucks, you know, snowplows, et cetera.
My question is, why don't you convert it all to residential, then? Get rid of all the junk.
Because that's not what he wants to do.
Okay.
And it's a mixed-use project.
Which you say you like. I do like.
In our, wait, wait.
Well, you know that you can't have barbed wire around the residential property.
Well, we're not going to do that.
Some million things that you have to do.
And we can't, and, and, and other than going affordable housing, state affordable housing, we can't put more than seven residential units in that, on that property based on your regulation. So, we are complying with that regulation. It's a mixed-use property. We like it. We think that the, it will help maybe spur a little bit interest in the adjoining property owner. And if you've been by that, that section of Success Avenue, steel shades are down all day long, those stores are vacant, the streets are dirty. It needs cleaning up. It needs cleaning up. And this, this type of development, this development will, will do just that, in our opinion.
I understand. I lived in the Bronx.
Oh, okay.
It takes a beginning.
And I'm going to give you back to Pat, for the time being.
Patrick Rose from Rose Tizo. So, that's the first floor. We have a dumpster enclosure next to the stairway for the units on the...
And all of these rental units are all watered, they're all...
There are five one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms.
And they all have sprinkler, they're all sprinkled?
Yes, the building will be sprinkled as part of its renovation.
And you're doing like double and triple sheet rock to make it fireproof from...
To separate that office from the residential.
Any commercial use.
Correct. And the storage from, from the residential also, yes. So, what we have on the second floor, stair up to one-bedroom units on either side, stair up to a two-bedroom unit and another storage area on that second floor. The third floor is the same, two one-bedroom units in this building, and then two, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom on the end here, up to that third floor. Pretty simple and straightforward layout. What the buildings will look like once we put on these additions is, is, the elevation's been rendered to some degree, to show you some different materials at least. That this right side elevation is what you see from the parking lot.
And that's current, that's the commercial space.
This is the commercial space.
Office space.
All along here, there are some garage elements here for, that they have some storage in, and then the residential addition above the, the storage space. Then, on the, this, this, as you went around the corner here, you'd see that the entrances to the residential spaces, these two garage doors are for those storage spaces below, and the door up to the residential above that. And then, the stairway is an entrance to the residential above. So, we, for the most part, we have a brick building existing that's there, and then we're, you know, we are currently showing a, a, a horizontal clapboard. We're having some questions. I'll let, I'll let Nick handle that when we get at the end. As to the materials we're going to use, we've added decorative lighting. We've added more residential-scale garage doors and entrances as requested by the ARB. So, we, we try to complain, comply with their, with their requests. But, it's a pretty simple building. This, this actually you won't see really because it's behind the building, way in the back, these exits. And this is actually from the playground. You'd see that all the way around in the back. You'd see the side of the building. And that's the end, this is the entrance to this stairway that goes up to these units.
Mr. Chairman and members, at this time, what I would like to do is go over the AR, some of the ARB comments and show you where we have agreed with them, where we have complied, and where we just don't feel that we can make actually one item on this, on their recommendations work. And they are recommendations. And this correspondence, which is included in your package that was submitted, is dated February 15, 2022. And, number one, bullet overhead doors should be more residential in nature. And as Mr. Rose just pointed out, we have complied with that, and they are more residential in nature. Material, bullet number, number two, material chosen should not be vinyl siding, and I'm going to leave that one alone for a second. and where we just don't feel that we can make actually one item on this, on their recommendations work, and they are recommendations. And this correspondence, which is included in your package that was submitted, is dated February 15, 2022. And number one bullet, overhead doors should be more residential in nature, and as Mr. Rose just pointed out, we have complied with that, and they are more residential in nature. Material, bullet number, number two, material chosen should not be vinyl siding, and I'm going to leave that one alone for a second. The next one, additional landscaping required around the lawn areas as perimeter of shrubbery, including at least one tree and perhaps some trees in the parking areas. We have complied with that as indicated by Mr. De Angelis, who showed you that, but on the colored rendering of the site plan for the plantings, the grass area and the open space. The chain link fences should be upgraded. Well, we're going to take the chain link fences down along with the barbed wire, unless Jay wants me to leave the barbed wire up, I'm not sure that he does though. I'm sorry, the what? The dumpster pad should be screened. It is. Appropriate decorative and safety lighting should be added to the buildings and to the parking lot. We agreed, and they were. The HVAC equipment, rooftop or otherwise, should be screened from view. They are. The trash enclosures should be enclosed appropriately. It will be. The safety and designs, from safety standpoint, design should be reviewed to include sidewalks, pedestrian access to main entrance and to anyone who is living there as well as visitors, and we did comply with all of those. Now, the issue that we have is, and I know that the ARB, for whatever reason, doesn't like vinyl siding, and they want us to look at other faces, which we did. And the closest we can come cost four times more than the highest grade of vinyl siding or vinyl shakes that we normally use, and we just cannot comply with that because it does not make financial sense. And I dare any of you to go by any brand-new home or a brand-new building that has vinyl siding on it, and if you walk within a two feet of that building, you will not be able to tell it's vinyl siding or vinyl, any vinyl type of material. It looks natural wood, it looks like natural cedar. They make the shakes that look wood, you could almost swear they are wood, and this is the type of material we'd like to use. Now, over the years, and I've been in this business 52 years, I started when I was 24 in this town. We have, huh, since I was 12, I wish, yeah, in 12. We have built many buildings over the years, many homes in this town, many projects, big ones and small ones. And over the years, they have changed materials, they have enhanced existing materials, and a perfect example are, we used to use wood casement windows. They are either now all vinyl, a composite, or some aluminum, and you can't even tell the difference anymore. The shutters are either vinyl, a composite, or wood-looking aluminum, and you can't tell the difference unless you're right on top of that. So to stipulate for this commission that we will use something other than vinyl siding on areas of the building that we think would mix and match and make it look really great, we can't comply with that, with that recommendation. Other than that, we have complied and can comply with any and all other recommendations that can be made by the ARB or by your commission. For example, there was only one comment other than Jay's comments, and that was from the town engineer that we should comply, and obviously, we need to comply with any requirements they may have for storm drainage, water retention on the property, sewer connections. We have to appear before the sewer commission, whether it's here or whether we tie into the Bridgeport system. You should be aware that a portion of this property, the front portion of this property, actually lies within Bridgeport, and we are planning to go into the Bridgeport planning and get approved additional number of units for the front of that property. There are currently two. We think we can do a maximum of six, which would fit right in, so that entire building will look like one building and one property in one town. I'm sorry, say again. Yes, yes. If you guys, that basically concludes our presentation in chief. Now, if you have any questions or concerns or something that you thought about that I said that you didn't understand, because I do speak a little bit fast and I apologize for that, I'll be happy to entertain them, because once you close the public hearing, I can't answer any questions. And I don't want anybody to go off thinking something that I said is not right or something that I said that you didn't understand. So now's your time, you can ask me anything you want.
Now, which, which part is the front of Success, 520 Success Avenue? Is it the?
This is, this is Success Avenue right here. This is the front portion, that's the Bridgeport. You see this line? You may be able to see it on your plan.
Yeah.
That's where the town, the town line is. So when you come into this development, there currently is a driveway here that you get into the development, get around. This is all chained off, and this is where all of the storage of the construction material and additional whatever is all back here.
Okay, and so now the, the units, are they three stories, what, with garages underneath? Or are they storage underneath?
No, there's all, it's all parking on ground, it's on-ground parking. There is, we meet the parking requirement, not only do we meet the parking requirement, and we cannot include what I'm about to tell you on our parking calculation. In this area right here, do you see where I'm pointing to? We have a 99-year lease with Success Village Association. So you can say, we pretty much own it. We have it for 99 years. So there's plenty of additional parking on top of all of the parking requirements that were met for the town of Stratford.
But I just see in, on the architectural designs here, it looks like garage doors underneath the units. Is that not so?
No, that's on the.
On the rear elevation?
On the rear elevation, yeah, but that's for storage.
Oh, so that's part of the storage part of your mixed-use development?
You've got storage, storage units on either side on the first floor underneath the apartments, and there's storage on the first floor underneath the apartments here in the existing building.
For each unit?
Not for the units, it's for the, for the occupier of the building, for the office.
Oh, okay, okay. That's all I had right now.
Yeah, I, so yeah, I guess, just try, so, so there, so there's going to be storage in these units underneath the living compartment or the living area, but it, it's.
That's correct.
But yeah, but there, but we don't know what, so in other words, these aren't storage rental units?
No, 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 these, no. They could be, wait, I'm sorry. They can be storage for rental, for the rental units, and they could also be storage for the businesses that are run out of there. That's going to be up to the owner of the property, of how he wants to do it.
And, and it's sort of a nebulous, undefined group of businesses, so.
Well, they're.
I, my concern, I'm like, are they going to be storing old pickup truck engines in there?
No, absolutely not, no. We're talking about paperwork. We're talking about boxes of paperwork that he uses in his business. He has a number of businesses that require a ton of paperwork, and he has to keep all of this stuff for eight to 10 years, and he's loaded with boxes, so he needs a storage on the property. He will not store these boxes on any other location that he owns. But there's not going to be motors, there's going to be no car repair, no junk left on the lot. As you can see, once it is done, the property is fully used 100% with parking and landscaping, so there's no room for junk on the outside of the building.
Mr. Owen, does that include contractor storage in there? Because that use is not allowed in a CIO zone.
It will not include contractor storage. You're correct. It does not allow contractor storage. And I thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Close the public portion.
Thank you, guys.
Second. Aye.
Are you sure? We just took those today or yesterday. No, those, the ones that exist in there?
Motion to close the public hearing. No, I closed that petition. Second.
Thanks, Jay.
Aye.
Motion, motion, open administrative session.
Second.
Yeah, and I just want to explain, so we've got no new public hearing items for next month, and because it's late, it sounds like you do not need to vote on any of the public hearing items tonight. We're meeting November 9th, where we can kind of take this up. I'm happy to stay if you guys want to work through these applications, but I'll leave that up to you all. There are a few. There are a few items on the work agenda that we, that we do need to get to this evening. They are time-sensitive, and we can get through those tonight, probably, I don't want to put a time on it, but it should be quick. So I would say for item number one, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you can pass on, continue, table all the, table all those public hearing items till November 9th. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Next one, approval of minutes. So, no, that's.
True, me too.
Go ahead, come on, let me get out of there, let's go. So what's second? All in favor? Aye, okay, we're good, let's go down. Lordship, that's a really easy one if you look at the paperwork. They give us three choices, A, B, or C. Well, the one here is, which one do we give to you? You guys have a cover check. They don't have to do this, but there's something else. We got a, we got a handout from Jay and Pachin.
Yep, and I will quickly explain, Mr. Chairman, there's a cover letter here dated September 16th with the Empire at the top, and then on the third page, there are three separate elevations. This building was approved, but they are giving the commission the opportunity to weigh in on the color accents that they are proposing in order to attract, I think, a younger demographic, and they feel like these color schemes are going to help, help allow them to do that. So there is a purple and, purple, yellow, and blue, which is the first option.
And that's their favorite?
I don't think that, oh, is it?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, well, that's their favorite. And the second option is a.
Yes.
Oh, well, they can't talk?
Well, they can't.
No.
We're going to do okay.
So there's a purple and yellow option, which is next, and then there is a blue and orange option, which is listed third, so.
Move that we accept the first option.
I like the third.
I like the first option. Well, it's a motion, I made a motion, I have to have a motion. Deion seconded it. So we have to vote on the motion.
It's supposed to, there are no, just panelists and senators.
Oh, okay.
We have to vote on the motion.
We have a second. He said, he said pay the choice. The number is paid.
I like, I like it too.
I like C, but I don't think it goes by. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in favor? Okay, 4-0.
Okay, so that was option one. Option one, 5-0.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we've got two CAM site plan reviews, 50 Housetonic is being continued to the November 9th meeting, as is 812 Housetonic Avenue.
So we're going to just continue these two? We need to do a motion? Just ignore it?
You just leave it, right?
You just leave it.
Okay, fine. Now, we have two accessory apartments?
Correct, we've got 405 Prayer Spring Road, this application.
One of these went through BZA.
BZA. And, let me just pull. That's correct, so I'll just handle the, I'll just quickly go over the first one on the agenda, which is 409 Prayer Spring Road, this application, 405, I'm sorry, excuse me. This site complies with all the criteria for the establishment of an accessory apartment. Staff, staff and I reviewed plans to ensure compliance. We feel comfortable with the approval of this application for an accessory apartment. So as part of the building permit process, that will need to be resolved with the Health Department. You know, we can approve it, but if they can't pass the B-100, then they can't do it, so.
All right. My question, anybody else have a question?
I drive down Prayer Spring lot because I live in Old Oak, it's right over there. It's a lovely street, so I don't think they would, anybody would do it.
We need a motion, right? We need a motion, it's going to be separate.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion on the first one?
Motion to approve 405 Prayer Spring Road for an accessory apartment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next one, it's 5-0. The next one, 280 James Road Farm Road, accessory apartment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to the previous application, this project met nearly all the criteria, other than the fact that, and this is something that, as the town staff gets ready to redo the zoning regulations, this is one that we have focused on. There's this criteria that, that an accessory apartment can't be any smaller than 400 square feet, can't be any larger than 800 square feet, and can't take up any more than 25% of the floor area. And we find that a lot of accessory apartment applications are 600 square feet.
And it must have a door below the back.
Correct, but.
A separate door.
But it, it, but what we find that triggers a lot of the variance applications is that it's 600 square feet, so it falls right in the middle of the 400, minimum of 400, maximum of 800, but because the house is tiny, it's more than 25%. And so it just seems like it's, it's, it's a criteria that needs to be revised, and that certainly is going to be one that we're going to look at. I would don't consider that just because the house is small, doesn't mean it shouldn't qualify for an accessory apartment to allow families to stay together. So that, it wouldn't be a huge concern to me. I would say that if they're proposing four sto, a four-story accessory apartment, and it doesn't meet any of the setbacks, and they're going over the coverage, well, that's a different, that's a different thing altogether. So I don't have any concern with the project that complies with all the other criteria for the accessory apartment. The variance was granted for this, so we recommend that this, this accessory apartment be approved as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
95, 5-0. The next one, 702, 159, that's fair.
Yep, we can skip that.
And I think there's only one more thing here, which is 500 North Avenue. We're doing that next time.
Yep.
Bloomberg Prestige. We're doing that the next time. 23, Special O'Veen, professional law lab. We just need to get, because that's one.
Move to accepting.
Move to accepting, someone second it, please. Did I rip it dead? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
5-0.
So the only other thing I wanted to add, and I know that it's late, but I think it's really relevant to our meeting tonight, is the amount of material that my office gets dumped on it the day of the public hearing, I can't tell you, I would say maybe half of your packet was dropped off today. Now, that doesn't leave staff any time, any reasonable amount of time to. Now, that doesn't leave staff any time, any reasonable amount of time to look at plans. Half those plans I didn't look at today. And that's not fair to me, and I don't think it's fair, and you are being put in that same exact position to evaluate these, I mean, we have them explaining them to us, but you don't get to really sit down and digest, you know, you're not contract, now, you're not all builders, I mean, maybe some of you are, but, you know, you need time to digest these things. So, you know, one of my suggestions, and I know that other towns do this, is to have, uh, to give me direction, and I would consider it a soft, soft, uh, uh, criteria, which is, you know, you have to have, any revisions have to be in ten days prior to a public hearing. That way I can get it up on the website for the public to view as well, not just me time to look at it and you all time. And, and so I know, I just happen to know that's other towns. If you bring in a revised set of plans after their deadline, see you next month. Sorry, you're not going this month.
Are you speaking about revisions, though? Or are you speaking about?
I'm talking about significant revisions. If we get, oh, John Casey, the town engineer, got us some staff comments a little late, that's one document. It's not, I mean, all those right there, that was the entire set of plans for twenty-five ninety today. That was everything that was revised. I never looked at it. Um, so, you know, I.
Question of two weeks or ten days? Same thing? Well, no, that's a big difference. It's an extra four days.
Could be ten business days.
If Jay, if Jay could say this, if you don't get it in ten business days, we don't have time to understand it and also get those commissioners to make your statement. You can interrupt and await until the next.
And allow me to reserve the right to, if it's, you know, an insignificant document, yeah, that shouldn't necessarily kick someone off a month.
Where does that go? We're giving you the option.
The thing is, you gotta give them a little bit of notice too, cause they're not used to that. They're used to be able to do what they're doing.
Yep, and, and. We are, we are the anomaly, though. Everywhere else has, has a rule like this. And, and I would say our, our regular cast, our regulars.
Mr. Chairman. See?
As long as you are all okay with that, I will add it to the application.
We are giving Jay the option? It's not an option, it's what he's gonna do. We're, we're giving Jay the instruction to be informed, everybody already discussed this before us, that they intended ten business days before the public.
So moved.
If he will add to the application, that's the second. If he will add to the application. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are we done? Jay, you are done?
Motion to adjourn.